Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners' regular meeting for July the 21st, 2014. I would like to remind everyone that this is a live meeting, so if you have a cellphone or a mobile device on you, please pull it out now and put it on vibrate or silent so that it doesn't go off during the meeting. And a number of you have filled out cards to speak, so if you will, when you come up for that, if you make sure you adjust the microphone well, because it is a live meeting, we want to make sure that anyone listening at home will be able to hear anything that you have to say. So with school not being in session, we already have our colors in place, so I would ask that everyone please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you'll stay standing, we also have our invocation, and I'm happy to welcome Reverend Tom Anderson with First Baptist Church tonight. Thank you. You can adjust that if you need to. After our invocation, I would also ask that you remain standing for a moment of silence.
Please allow me to share two verses from the Book of Jeremiah. This is what the Lord says: "Let us not, let the wise man not boast in his wisdom; for the strong man boast in his strength, or the rich man boast of his riches; but let him who boasts boast about this, that he understands and knows me, that I am the Lord who exercises kindness, justice, and righteousness on earth; for in these I delight," declares the Lord. Would you pray with me? Heavenly Father, we bow before you this evening in humble gratitude for the many blessings that are ours that have come by way of your grace and your providence. Thank you for the freedoms that we enjoy as Americans and the quality of life we enjoy as citizens of North Carolina and Cabarrus County. Thank you for the men and women of this Board of Commissioners who give of themselves, following their own conscience, in making decisions for the well-being of the people of this community. Father, whether we agree with the decisions of our leaders or not, may we respect their office, their authority, and their service to us all. Grant each one your wisdom in their deliberations and decision-making, that ultimately your will would be done. Remind us, O God, that a true knowledge of you is the path to true freedom and prosperity. May we seek the things that you delight yourself in: kindness, justice, and righteousness. Thank you for these interested and concerned citizens that are here, as well as those who are viewing by TV. Lord, help us all who are members of this community to strive for peace and harmony, that Cabarrus County may represent a wonderful place to raise a family, educate our children, find success in business, and continue to have the freedom to serve you, our Creator and our God, according to the dictates of our conscience. We ask this prayer in the name of the Lord Jesus Christ. Amen.
I would like to ask you to join me in a moment of silence tonight. Ken Payne was a former county commissioner. He served from 1980 to 1988, and then again from 1990 to 1994. Mr. Payne, say, yesterday?
Two o'clock, yes, Sunday morning.
Sunday morning, died Sunday morning, and we would like to take a moment for all of us to think about his family and his friends and the time that they're going through right now. And so please join me in a moment of silence for Ken Payne and his family. Thank you all very much. And I also want to make a comment, a quick comment before we start, Commissioners. I think you all probably know, but for Karen Wilson, this is her last meeting with us. She is moving on to a different position. She's been representing the Independent Tribune and covering us for quite a few years. And so thank you very much for your coverage, and thanks for being here your last week of work, and hope that you do very well in your new position and that's enjoyable. Maybe you won't have such late meetings with it, I don't know. Commissioners, the first thing we have is approval or correction of the minutes. So at this time, I'd accept a motion to approve the minutes.
So move.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion, a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Next, we have the agenda. Commissioners, if you will notice, under the consent agenda, item number three has been taken care of. That was a request from the Cabarrus Health Alliance concerning the vaccinations they did, and the company has stepped forward and is taking care of that. So we are going to remove item number three under the consent agenda. At this time, are there any other changes to the agenda?
I'd like to move three, no, four and five to new business.
So you want to make those five and six under new business?
Yes.
Just move them to the end? Okay. Did you make a motion? Was that your motion?
I make a motion to move four and five to new business off of consent agenda.
Okay. And then to delete number three, which we were going to do already.
Delete number three, correct.
Okay. So I have a motion to approve the agenda with changes. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
There's a motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you. Okay. First up, we have recognitions and presentations. So Alan Thompson is here from EMS.
I'm pleased to be here tonight with an award that Cabarrus County Mercy Medical Services has received, and is representative of the excellence in service that our paramedics deliver to the community each day. We've received the 2014 National Association of County Commissioners Achievement Award for Cardiac Arrest Survival and Enhancement Strategies related to the way that we perform CPR within our system. Last year, 84 percent of citizens who had cardiac arrest in Cabarrus County regained a pulse. Thirty-five percent of those were discharged from the hospital, minimal neurological deficit. Those numbers rival some of what's being observed across the nation, especially some of the larger systems. We just received a report card about how we are performing in comparison to the other counties in North Carolina. Right now, Cabarrus County ranks number two in the state with patients who survive cardiac arrest. That's a tribute to the service, the excellent care, and the commitment that our paramedics deliver to the citizens of the county each day. Tonight, I bring with me the award that we received from the National Association of County Commissioners. Also present one to Mr. Downs for display at the county building as appropriate, because this is representative of a culture of care, excellence in care, and is not a service that's just provided by the paramedics. It is provided by the entire leadership of the county. And what you do, what county leadership does, enables our paramedics to hit the field each day and to make a difference in the lives of our citizens. So thank you for this opportunity to be here.
Our EMS department does an excellent job, and we are all very proud of them. Next, we have Debbie Brandon. You have two different recognitions, I believe?
We do. Good evening.
Good evening.
This year, Cabarrus County placed second in the 12th Annual Digital County Survey for the Population Category of 150,000 to 250,000. The Center for Digital Governments Digital County Survey is conducted in partnership with the National Associations of Counties to recognize counties for their innovative use of technologies that improve service and boost efficiencies. This year's survey, we highlighted the ITS's Department innovative programs and partnerships with other county departments, school districts, and local jurisdictions. Increased collaboration in use of technology has allowed the county to be more transparent, do more with less, and improve our service delivery. The ITS Department works hard to provide efficient strategic solutions that line with the Board of Commissioners' goals and meet the customers' requirements. It's an honor to be recognized as a top digital county in the nation. This award acknowledges the vision and hard work of my ITS staff, you, the Board of Commissioners, for your support of technology, and all employees that work for the county that are willing to embrace change and use technology as a way to reduce costs and improve the delivery of services for our customers and citizens. And we were also, have been awarded several recognitions for our work with the Cabarrus County Schools and the Kannapolis City Schools and our Cooperative Technology Services. And just as a little reminder of what we've been doing here, it's kind of been a long road. We've been working since 2010, when staff began meeting with those agencies. And then we initiated an inter-agency agreement with the Board of Commissioners in each school system in September of 2011. In November of 2011, you, the Board of Commissioners, provided funding for the co-location of each school's data center and network and storage systems in the Cabarrus County data centers. The technology staff of all three agencies worked together to make changes required to facilitate the sharing of the infrastructure and move into the shared data centers. Cabarrus County Schools successfully completed their move in January of 2012, and Cabarrus County ITS worked with the Kannapolis City Schools to virtualize and transition their servers and completed that move in April of 2012. In December of 2012, Cabarrus County entered into a memorandum of agreement with Kannapolis City Schools to provide managed network services. And in August of 2013, the Board of Commissioners approved an extension of the storage area network lease to increase storage capacities for the county and for the schools. This year, our efforts were recognized with three awards. In March of 2014, the Kannapolis City Schools received a first-place Magno Award for its technology partnership with Cabarrus County. The Magno Award is a national recognition program that honors school boards' best practices and innovative programs that advance student learning. In May of 2014, Cabarrus County's ITS Department was awarded the Central Carolina Councils of Government Region of Excellence Award in Controlling the Cost of Government for our collaboration with technology services. And then in 2014 of this year, the National Association of County Commissioners also granted Cabarrus County a 2014 Achievement Award for that collaboration. Thank you.
You have a couple of things there?
This is the McCogg and the Achievement Award, and our coveted second-place digital county.
Thank you all. I know you worked really hard with the schools to help give them backup and redundancy, and it took a long time, but you know, sometimes things take a little bit longer for us to figure out a way to work together. So I appreciate all the hard work that you've done. I know it's saved a lot of money by doing that, and not only is it more efficient, but it's also been a cost-saving. So that's a really good result for everybody. So thank you very much.
It has. Thank you.
Okay. Next, I'd like to call Ryan Shaver to come up, please. Welcome tonight.
Thank you, Commissioners, for having us. My name's Ryan Shaver. I'm the masonry instructor at Mount Pleasant High School, and this is Daniel Furr. He's a graduate of Mount Pleasant High School, and we're here because we brought back the gold from Skills USA National Masonry Contest in June. Our county is so blessed to have trade and industrial programs in our local high schools, and there's four masonry programs in the county, and between two of our masonry programs, Mount Pleasant and Central Cabarrus, we have won the national over 20 times. North Carolina has won the national 29 times out of the 46 years that it has been running. So I'd say Cabarrus County is feared across the country when it comes to masonry. So we want to keep it that way. But thank you for having us tonight and recognizing our achievement.
This is Daniel.
Yes, he is.
Do you want to say something? About all your heart? Oh, come on. Hey, for everybody, for those of you that don't know, you need to Google Skills USA, and it is an amazing competition. It's amazing to see the skill level of the students that compete. They're given a drawing and a set amount of blocks and stuff, blocks in the mortar and the, all their, all your gear, and then they have to reproduce it. And sometimes they get finished, and some of the students don't finish, and they do all kinds of things in Skills USA. It's a phenomenal group, and you're right, masonry is feared all over. I think at the state level, they're always afraid when Cabarrus County comes to compete, and then you go off to nationals and keep bringing it back home. They do an excellent job. One of the things, I know the Central group at the Gateway for Concord out at 601 and where Branchew comes in, that block, brick sign, I guess, the masonry students from Central did that, and you guys just do a great job. And you're in college now?
Yes, ma'am.
So where are you? Come up to the microphone. I'm going to do something to make sure you talk. Where do you go to college?
I go to NC State, and I'll be a sophomore this fall. Right now, I'm in the Material Science Department, but I'm planning to transfer to Civil and do more with structural engineering.
And your masonry skills will help you with that?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you do, work on the side?
Right now, I've been working with a contractor in Shelby, North Carolina, and they're doing a furnace rebuild for PPG, and they're doing like a, they manufacture fiberglass, and then I've been helping them out.
I might have some masonry. That's why I was asking if I could, you know.
We've got him busy for the summer until he goes back to college, but it's great that he can have something to do over the summer. So not only learning a trade in high school, you know, it's like riding a bicycle. Whether you do it every day, you've got it. And so I'm just proud that Daniel is moving on, and can't wait to see where he ends up.
And I do want to give a shout-out to the building industry. The CCBIA has been very helpful locally with you, doing local competitions, and provided some supplies, and a lot of support from CCBIA, so they deserve to be recognized too, because they help you in your competitions.
Absolutely.
Along with the carpentry students.
Thank you.
Yep. Thank you very much. Give him a big round of applause.
Commissioners, the next thing we have is informal public comments. I have quite a few cards, and they're in the order that they were just handed to me, and I haven't looked at them. I do ask, we do have the bond referendums that we're going to have public hearings on later. We've pulled out a couple cards that I know are specifically for the bond referendum. If I call your name and what you really want to talk about is the bond, either of the bonds, will you just let me know then, and I'll set your card off to the side and then let you talk at that time? Because that would be more appropriate when we do that public hearing, okay? I think that we've gotten it sorted, but if I call you and that's what you want to talk about, then just let me know, that's not a problem. When you come up, you may have to, I'm short, so I always have to pull that microphone down. If you're tall, you might have to adjust it, depending on who, you know, you go after, but if you will, the camera up here will get you, so if you'll, instead of turn around and facing everybody back there, if you'll just talk in the microphone, and this camera will be able to pick you up. So that would be helpful. First speaker that we have is Price Crutchfield.
Yes, I'm concerned about children's safety, and four days ago, I heard a report on the conservative channel, Fox News, 620 pedophiles have been exposed by the FBI. We're talking about teachers, doctors, Boy Scout leaders, and let's see who else was it. Oh, police. I've warned about this time and time again. Now, these are little innocent children being viewed by these heroes. If they'll do that, what else will they do? Now, right here in Concord, the other day, I was speaking out on the street, and a Concord police officer grabbed my property out of my hand, threw it on the ground, and stomped it, and his name would be Sergeant Dexter Barlow, this hero. Now, I thought these folks were professionals. They got guns on their sides. They're supposed to be handling dangerous situations, but here's somebody, because he doesn't like my views about the police, he grabs my property out of my hand, throws it on the ground, and stomps it. And then when I try to make a police report on it, they won't do anything in writing. And I said, why can't I get a written police report? Well, we just do this verbally. I've been through that before, too. Now, I was speaking out about the police in Concord being able to make plea bargains and not registering as sex offenders at our schools when they're charged with sex crimes. Some of the police have told me that this incident that happened at Jay Robinson School, that that girl made that up. She recanted her story, made all that stuff up later in life. And then when I had a conversation the other day with the chief of police, the new chief of police, I told him, I said, well, if she made all that stuff up, why wasn't she arrested and charged with a crime? And why wasn't he compensated for his loss of his job? Too many things don't add up. See, my position is, yes, he did do something. And I had a meeting with the former chief of police, Merle Hamilton, some time back, who described in detail what he did in the presence of credible witnesses. Meanwhile, I get sergeants on the police force grabbing my property out of my hand and throwing it on the ground and stomping it. If I grabbed any one of your property, let's say you had a pen or a paper or something that was yours, whatever, I just decided to grab it out of your hand and throw it on the ground and stomp it, what do you think would happen to me? I'd be downtown. Now, your neighbor, Jason, Commissioner, yeah, I don't have much, I can't pronounce, I'm sorry, I can't pronounce your last name. But your neighbor, the one that owns the ice cream shop, he broke the law and lied to the police on me and told the police that the parents of several children had complained that I was scaring their kids. And then I went to court and pleaded not guilty, and your neighbor, you said, was such a good guy, his lies didn't hold up. What's going on here? People who are friends with the, he went to college, the same college Merle Hamilton went to, I found that out. It's funny how these little circles evolve. And it's amazing how his lies didn't hold up in court. He thought I was just going to cower down and plead guilty to something I didn't do. He's a liar.
And I also want to say, I never learned phonics very well. If I mispronounce your name, which I got this next one, but if I do, then I apologize, and you can correct me when you come up. The next speaker we have is Vicki Cook. I hope I got that right. You print very nice and small.
That was large. I've always been told that very intelligent people have micrography. So if you've heard, my name is Vicki Cook. I've lived in Concord since I was 17. Obviously, that's been a couple of years ago. I have been in Concord a long time. I've seen a lot of positives, I've seen a lot of growth, and I've seen a lot of negatives. One of the things that I would like to speak to you about tonight is the budget. Being a representative of the people in the simplest terms is that you're responsible to the people that you represent. It is true that the most popular opinions are not necessarily the best alternatives. However, careful consideration and research should be the foundation of fair and just decisions. Being on the Board of Commissioners does not give anyone the right to pursue their own personal agenda. However, I believe that the citizens of Cabarrus County has witnessed that. To vote for the dissolution of favorable county initiatives without due research and process is an embarrassment to the members of the commission that voted yes. It is too apparent now that our county will suffer greatly financially as a result of the heinous shortsightedness. One of the members' blogs stated, "Lomax Farms just benefited 10 farmers." That is comical, and clearly shows that the person who stated this demonstrated a lack of understanding or any serious research into what Lomax Farm represented. Additionally, I have a personal interest in Cabarrus County employee health, because I helped set that up. And I have to say that I followed that and I've seen the benefits of that, because I believe in looking at numbers and looking at results, rather than looking at how much will we save if we crunch, if we delete that. I was in management the majority of my 36-year career and understand the budget process much too well. What occurred during the Commissioners' meeting, we little people like to refer to as slash and burn. Those are actions by persons that did not have sufficient knowledge of the items they blindly cut out of the budget in order to meet budget goals. If the Commissioners suspected extravagance or wastage, there were proper mechanisms that should have been followed to deal with them, specifically identify and the cost-benefit ratio determined, not the haphazard and unsystematic slashing of the budget. Additionally, the manner in which it was handled suggested an underhanded and self-serving. I'm not a student of the law, but I'm sure there must be an avenue for the Board to be able to rescind those decisions and to come out in favor of a more organized and thoughtful plan which can achieve greater deficit reduction from targeted balanced choices. The outcome of most of those decisions made by three members will result in more cost to our county. Is that the end? Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you very much. Next, I have Nelson Lee. Hi, welcome.
Thank you. As she said, my name is Nelson Lee. Amazing, I didn't have to lower this thing. I have been a Cabarrus County resident for all but about six months of my life. My father was killed in World War II. I was the sole surviving son and did not have to serve or go to a combat zone. I did both. I tell you that not to brag, but to let you know that I'm proud to call myself an American. Soldiers of World War II that came home were treated as heroes and had parades. Korean veterans were just ignored. Not all, but enough Vietnam veterans were treated with no respect, kicked, spit on, and cursed when they returned home. Some say this did not happen. Just because it didn't happen to you doesn't mean it didn't happen to someone else. Jane Fonda and other protesters created a havoc for the Vietnam veteran. The public has been trying to right the wrong done to Vietnam veterans by treating the Afghanistan and Iraqi veterans with more respect, which they do deserve. Do Vietnam veterans deserve a park to be named after the Vietnam Veterans Park? Yes, they do. They have endured much humiliation over the years, and the least that can be done is to rename North Cabarrus Park to Vietnam Veterans Park. If Mayor Hennett thinks that this would cause confusion with Veterans Park in downtown Kannapolis, then maybe a map can be provided for him. Village Park and Veterans Park are in close proximity in Kannapolis. I haven't heard of that creating a problem. I ask that the Cabarrus County Commissioners take action now, and don't wait for Vietnam veterans to die before taking action. Kannapolis may never take over the park, therefore, I feel it is your duty to take action now. I've been a resident of Kannapolis for the last 16 and a half years. I've been the president of Vietnam Veterans Chapter 909 in Concord for the past six years, and I'm serving two more years now. A proud American, thank you for listening to my concerns.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Timothy Vaughn.
My topic is the restoration of the county's contribution to the Economic Development Corporation. I am Timothy Vaughn. I'm the general manager at Hilbush Ford, and I've been there for some years. I live in Kannapolis. If my math is correct, in the last 10 years, we've spent some $400,000 in Cabarrus County property taxes. We're now celebrating our 60th year in Cabarrus County. You extrapolate that math, and it's a lot of money. Not many people can say that. In the last two years, we've spent hundreds of thousands of dollars improving the facility, and that continues today. Without companies, the EDC is an investment in our future. Without companies and people moving here and working in Cabarrus County, we might as well stop spending the money and just hunker down and wait for whatever comes next. But that's just not the way forward-thinking business people go about it. I'm asking you to restore the funding to the EDC. Restore it because it's the right thing to do for the county. It's a public-private partnership. If we take pause in recruiting, which is exactly what we've done, we will certainly have missed opportunities to expand the tax base. We can't afford to miss many opportunities. In fact, I don't think we can afford to miss any opportunities. The competition surrounding counties are working hard to take those away from us. So please consider restoring this service. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Our next speaker is Robin Pope.
My name is Robin Pope, and I'm a Cabarrus County resident. I recently served on the Kannapolis branch of the Friends of the Library and on the Cabarrus County Council of Sustainable Local Economy. Words are all around us each day. They can empower us, weaken us, bring us to laughter, and even down on our knees in tears, but nothing is greater than the power of our words when spoken in unity. And I feel that the citizens of Cabarrus County were robbed of that freedom on June 21st, when budget cuts of almost $4 million to local county services were approved by Ostrich, Miesmer, and Burridge, and without citizen comment. I was greatly opposed to them for many reasons, but two have really hit home for me, the library and Lomax Farms. The amendment said that the library patrons were more satisfied in 2010 with 30 employees than they are now with 44. I'm in the library on a weekly basis and want to see the facts. Patrons I speak to would not all agree and were with me suffering through the last budget cuts. So I would really like to see those. As for Lomax Farms, I have a hard time finding your motives here. First, how can such a numbers man such as yourself, Jason, make a mistake between the county spending $400,000 and $170,000? It really didn't, it really did get the media attention in the beginning and enraged a good many citizens. I realize the county has agreed to leave the power and water on until they get their 501(c)(3) and get involved with the Carolina Farm Steward Association, but I believe it was the community that got the ball rolling, not the commission. I've gone to your website, Jason, in hopes of giving you the benefit of the doubt, but I must say that I'm hanging on by my fingernails. In response to Fletcher Hartzell's House Bill 1218, that was not an attempt to stack the Board of Commissioners, it was a simple response to you doing exactly as you please. I saw a lot of good words on your website, Jason, many, many words. So in closing to you, if you consider yourself to be the watchman of the wall, then you need to stand for the people of Cabarrus County.
Our next speaker is Cheryl Kelling.
Good evening. My name is Cheryl Kelling. My husband Doug and I have lived in Concord for 38 years. My concerns tonight are focused on the actions of Commissioners Burridge, Miesmer, and Ostrich at the June 16th meeting of the Board of County Commissioners and the consequences of the amendments to the budget that was passed that night. The time for public comments had ended, and no additional comments were allowed from the public. Many of us who attended that meeting were dismayed and disheartened by the actions of those three commissioners. There was no time for additional comments from the public and no opportunity for the county staff to do additional research that might have proved critical for understanding the implications of the proposed cuts which were included in the amendments. At that time, specific cuts were made to the Cabarrus County Manager's Office, the Elmalo Max Incubator Farm, the Economic Development Corporation, the Wellness Center, and the main branch of the Cannon Memorial Library, as well as to several other projects and the county's contribution to its employees' health insurance benefits. These cuts were made to a proposed budget whose general fund was already 1.8% less than last year's adopted budget. In addition, in spite of the fact that these three were defeated in the primary and therefore had a mere five months remaining in their terms, they took it upon themselves to reduce the commissioner's salary by one-third. Perhaps they viewed this as a magnanimous gesture on their part. I view it as nothing more than a political ploy in hopes of currying favor with the citizens of Cabarrus County. The means by which these amendments were inserted into the proposed budget and then that budget was promptly approved reveal a total lack of respect, transparency, and true concerns for the citizens of our county. In the eyes of a great number of people here in Cabarrus County, this last-minute budget is nothing more than vindictive retribution resulting from the outcome of the primary election. In closing, I urge you tonight to rethink your actions of June 16th, rescind the budget that was passed that night, and instead vote tonight to approve the budget that was originally submitted by the county manager and his staff.
Our next speaker is Joe Rowland.
My name is Joe Rowland. I'm a fourth-year farmer at the Elmalo Max Incubator Farm. My wife and I own a small poultry and produce operation on Mount Olive Road, and we also operate an online farm-based delivery business that works with a lot of farms here in the county and outside as well. I want to thank you all and let you know that I appreciate your willingness to work with the Lomax farmers over the last few weeks. I want to commend you on your decision to allow the farm to transition to the Carolina Farm Stewardship Association and continue its mission of supporting small and beginning farmers in the county at no additional cost to taxpayers. In the last few years at Lomax, we've covered a lot of topics, learned a lot of techniques, things that range from soil sciences, cultivation, weed, pest, disease control and management, greenhouse operations, season extension, post-harvest handling, sanitation, irrigation, storage, marketing, sales, some carpentry, plumbing, small engine repair, the list goes on and on. With the topic of agriculture being so broad and so far-reaching, the opportunity to work hands-on, side-by-side, experienced instructors is unequaled by books, classrooms, or even the internet. The Lomax farm does a lot more than just teach a few individuals to grow vegetables. I think it's preserving and protecting a way of life and continuing traditions that are rapidly declining in a lot of our society. When I think ahead 30 or 40 years, to what I hope will be the end of my career, 30 or 40 years if I can get that far, and I ponder what my life, my farm, and the community will look like, I hope there are bright young people that are willing to do what I've done and continue on, teach and learn kind of the legacy that I'm trying to do over my life, too. Abraham Lincoln once said, "The greatest fine art of the future will be the making of a comfortable living from a small piece of land." And I believe that. And I believe that the farm and CFSA, they're trying to make that possible. So I thank you all again for the opportunities that the county has directly provided for me, and then also for the opportunities I think it'll provide in the future with this decision. And then finally, it's a little embarrassing, but I want to take the opportunity to apologize for a statement I made recently in the paper. It was a poor choice of words on my part, and it was spoken in frustration, and it was embarrassing to see in print. More than that, I'm bothered by it because my true feelings weren't really represented. So I'm proud to be a Cabarrus County resident. I'm thankful that I've been able to carve out my own little niche. My wife and I chose to settle here, start a farm, build a business, grow our families, and I thank you. I apologize, and I thank you for your consideration.
Our next speaker is Edie Barnhart.
Good deal. Thank you. Good evening. I stand tonight with troubled mind and heavy heart. I will do my best to use these three minutes wisely. I'm a native of Concord, North Carolina, and live with my husband Matt and Kat, Lucy Lou. Believe it or not, I remember observing Farmer's Day when Concord High played Northwest Cabarrus football. Times have changed. I also fondly remember twirling in the stools at the lunch counter when Eckards was located in the Carolina Mall. Okay, enough about me. I believe that a fundamental aspect of good productive citizenship requires being informed. You can't voice your opinion or complain if you don't know, right? Subsequently, I do my best to be informed. About a year ago, I began paying closer attention to the rumblings of our local politics as the rumblings became more frequent and definitely more lively. I also found myself attending these meetings, and if I couldn't attend them, I watched them on TV or online because it is my duty as a good citizen to base my opinions and viewpoints on the facts, not hearsay. Allow me to voice an opinion. I am ashamed and embarrassed. I wonder what our forefathers or mothers are thinking today. It's as if the citizens of Cabarrus County do not matter. No one is looking out for me or for the citizens of Cabarrus County. No one seems to have the courage to model cooperative statesmanship and compromise. See, working together with those who have different opinions and viewpoints, based on facts, mind you, to achieve a common agreed-upon goal has the potential for awesomeness. However, here, what matters is the show. Which ring is the circus performing in today? Once again, I am embarrassed. I keep waiting for said awesomeness to emerge. I keep waiting. The citizens of Cabarrus County keep waiting. I believe my sorry cat is even waiting. We need to know that we, the people, matter. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Liz Gray.
My name is Liz Gray. For those of you that don't know me in this room, I'm a mother that has two children in the public school system. I'm a small business owner. I'm also the president of the Concord-Cabarrus Business and Professional Women. As you probably know, I'm already dissatisfied with the recent budget cuts and the process of how it was voted on. I come to you today to speak out on public record regarding the dissatisfaction of myself and other county residents that are in this room and those that aren't able to be here. Many broken promises were made public that evening. During the primary election, the voters begged to know where the supposed $1.8 million worth of cuts were going to be made. Mr. Burridge, Mr. Ostrich, and Mr. Miesmer, you made over $3 million worth of cuts, and I think that your decisions are truly based on pure political retaliation, clearly against the will of the people who voted you out of Cabarrus County. I am also the state legislative chair for North Carolina Business and Professional Women. It is my responsibility to speak on a state level regarding any issue pertaining to women in business, politics, and education in my community. I recently traveled to Raleigh to speak to North Carolina legislators about what was done via your budget cuts and how we, the people of Cabarrus County, want to take action and speak out against it immediately. While speaking to a room of over 20 legislators, the questions that I received for them were mainly about our funding for economic development. They were stunned, confused, and angry for us. While some of them agreed with your budget decisions, they took this as a slap in the face for future development of Cabarrus County. Like myself, they just didn't understand it. So I would ask why you made the decisions that you made, but you have already publicly made them known. As a small business owner, which is dependent on a growing, thriving local economy, and as a chamber member, I know that our local Chamber of Commerce is not rated a five-star Chamber of Commerce because it does not support or endorse candidates. The photos that were attached to your amendment, Mr. Ostrich, were from an event that I attended as well as over 200 other businesswomen in this community. To call those, to call that, those photos, an endorsement is hardly realistic. Were you just mad that you didn't think to connect with women in our community on that level first? I take that barbaric action as a direct attack on women in politics, and you should be ashamed of yourself. In closing, I ask that you, Mr. Burridge, Mr. Ostrich, and Mr. Miesmer, take a moment of self-reflection on your actions attacking our growing local economy, women in business, women in politics, and consider a sincere apology. Would you treat your sister, your wife, your mother, or daughter that way if they didn't agree with you 100%? I don't think so.
Our next speaker is Dekeeta Vanderburg-Johnson.
Chairman Poole, distinguished commissioners, I'm Dekeeta Johnson, and I'm the owner of Southgate Masonry and Lumber Business that moved here in 2002. As a small business owner employing 12 people, down 15 since the recession, we are in an industry crippled by the recession. Economic development is critically important to me. Good-paying, reliable jobs must come to Cabarrus County to sustain the businesses that are already here. North Carolina is a desirable location for industry to relocate. The EDC gives the county a voice and assists us in competing for jobs in our region. One of you even indicated at the Winkler Forum that you would like to see the county borders closed. No more people, no more developers. With our proximity to the Charlotte metro area, this statement is an impossibility. Controlled, managed growth brings jobs and opportunities to the citizens of Cabarrus County. Industry moving to Cabarrus County will produce a trickle-down effect that will bring residual businesses coming to our county, sales of support items, additional property taxes, and additional revenues for this county. I encourage you to reconsider your negative thoughts about our local EDC. The beauty of our EDC is that it truly has been a public-private partnership, bringing business and industry leaders together with elected officials to create alliances that have brought jobs and tax revenues to our county. Many may say that my feelings are self-serving because I'm in the building industry. I've seen good people lose their jobs. I've seen businesses close. I've seen people struggle every day to make ends meet. I struggle every day now in my business to make ends meet. As a lifetime resident, I don't want to see my community die on the vine. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Steve Kood.
My name's Steve Kood. I've been a resident here for 39 years, raised two children, sent to school here. Cabarrus County's my home. As a former employee, I used to interview candidates for jobs with transportation. I told them, "You won't get rich working here, but the benefits are good. The health coverage is good," which is a big deal as you get older. If indeed I was still employed with Cabarrus County, I couldn't tell them that anymore. Did some figures. We had about 3,300 people go to the, by the way, the Wellness Center, I don't know how that was voted out. There is no Wellness Center that I know of in Cabarrus County. It's Employees Health Center. People voted on that without knowing what it was. Over 3,300 people went there last year with what the folks saved with deductibles and doctors' fees, with an average doctor's visit of $140. The county saved last year over $96,000 by having that Employee Health Center open. You say, "We're cutting the budget to save that money." You don't save that money. You pay more out when that place is closed. It's just, it's a shame. To add on top of that, adding the extra cost from $6,300, I think it is, to $8,100 for each person in the county that gets the benefits for that, that's $1,300 a year to people that, over the last six years, have got a raise. The average raise was one-half of 1%, which for the folks that drove for me turned out to be $2.40 a week. That's not a very good exchange for adding $1,300 to what they're going to have to pay for their health care. It's a shame that the health care... It's a shame that the health care for Cabarrus County employees has been left to three folks that apparently don't care about their welfare. Three folks that... One who's never been elected to anything, one who's always worked for his daddy, and another, Mr. Burridge, I think differently about him now. I've seen, Mr. Burridge has worked his whole life. I just think he's been duped a couple of times by the two other folks. Thank you for listening to me.
Our next speaker, Rose Rumel-Yuri.
Thank you, Commissioners, for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Rose Rumel-Yuri, and I'm a member of Central United Methodist Church. We have a very small little plot out at the Lowmax Incubator Farm. It's a quarter acre, and from that plot, we have, as of last week, harvested 1,600 pounds of food that we have donated to the CCM's Food Bank. So I'm here tonight to, first of all, say thank you for keeping the electric in the water, turning all that back on. It's been very helpful for us. And I'm also very much in favor of your new business. Number two, transitioning over to the Carolina Farm Stewardship Alliance. Everybody at Central's really thrilled about that possibility, and we thank you very much for hopefully voting for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Allison Smith.
Good evening, Commissioners. Mike, it's good to see you. Yeah, I have to pull it down, I'm short. I'm coming to you today, and exactly three months ago this day, I was here being recognized by Allen for my retirement. So I'm speaking for the retired employees. I'm also speaking for our current employees because a lot of them are afraid to come and I was here for nearly 30 years, serving the citizens and visiting this county in the capacity of emergency medical services. First as a paramedic, and later as a captain who supervised a shift and managed daily operations. Cabarrus County is a great place to live, and the reason it is is because of the great services and experiences that are offered by the employees who work here. Just having Allen here and the awards EMS has won. I'm still proud, even though I'm no longer with them. It makes me very proud. Also, our IT department. You know, we always worked hand-in-hand with them, and it was great. County government exists to provide its taxpayers with quality service through tax dollars and fees for services that are provided. I come today to speak for myself and for the retirees and employees. A lot of folks are afraid to voice their opinions because they're afraid of retribution, and I know that that should never happen, but people feel that way. I never thought I would see the day that employees were in fear of the Commissioners, but they are. They're afraid of losing their benefits, and with the abrupt closure of the County Employee Health Center, it is no wonder. I myself was left scrambling to find a new doctor. I should have had my annual health exam in July. Now it's going to be October or November because that was the earliest I could find a physician who would take me and get me in. So this has affected me personally, and I really hate that this got closed because that thing saves us tons of money. I know it has to. I've been able to go when I worked and was on duty and could just drop in and be seen, you know, if it was an infection or a cold or an allergy, get something, and be right back out the door and back to work. With that thing being closed now, people are going to be taking their time off to have to go to the doctor, and it just makes no sense to me why you'd be close it. This county employs nearly 1,000 employees, and that's including the retirees and the current people. And like Steve Kood said, it's $140. Well, on the Department of Health's website, the average doctor visit is $140 to $265, depending on your lab work and the things that you have to have done while you're there. If every employee we have makes one sick visit, it'll cost nearly $240,000 just to our insurer, and we're self-insured. So that Employee Health Service helped us save our insurance dollars by being able to go there and avoid the copays and all that stuff. Also, due to this closure, we'll now be sending all new employees for their pre-employment drug screens to a private company, which will be a substantial cost. Flu shots, sick visits... Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is David Hampton.
My name's David Hampton. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Obviously, there's a lot of citizens that are outraged after the three of you voted and approved an unseen budget amendment that was unethically slid in after the public comment. The way it was presented without review by staff, fellow board members, or citizens pretty much sums up the worthiness of this amendment. One of the cuts was closing of the Employee Health Clinic and cutting of the Health and Wellness Program. After being in health care, employed here as EMS and EMS director for 35 or almost 35 years, I can see some of the ramifications that go along with this decision. You now will have some employees that will not seek early treatments and screenings. Some of the employees won't seek medical care until it escalates to the point of an emergency room visit or worse, and this is obviously going to be an increasing cost to the county. Instead of seeking, our private industry has been providing Employee Health Clinics for years, and if it's cost-effective for them, why is it not cost-effective for us? Not only was the program cut, it was cut so quickly that it's jeopardized employee health. You now have employees scrambling to find a physician that can immediately take over their care and immediately start treating them. It's not an easy task, to say the least. The Employee Health Clinic saw, on average, of 250 to 300 patients a month, and I only can imagine the additional cost the county will now pay out to private doctors' offices and for ER visits, let alone services, other services they provided, which will now be outsourced at a premium price. The Health and Wellness Program helped a very large number of employees get into better shape and live healthier lives. This ultimately saved us all money. It's no secret employees can cross the county line and increase their salary. One way Cabarrus County has been able to stay competitive is being able to offer a good benefits package. Cost savings by reducing benefits will quickly disappear if the county is not able to retain or recruit employees. We were told 12 million in budget cuts could be found without cutting any programs or services or personnel, even stating, and I quote, "We are not going to cut services. That's ridiculous." When the staff presented facts and stated it couldn't be done, it was publicly stated staff was, quite frankly, lazy, lying to the public, and the presentation was a total joke. Mr. Osterreich found out himself that even a $3 million budget reduction required these cuts. So based on your own previous comments, Mr. Osterreich, evidently you are now the one that is, quite frankly, lazy, lying to the public, and whose plan is a total joke. I'm asking Commissioner Burridge and Meesmer to help stop this nonsense. Mr. Osterreich, you were never elected by the people, and when given the opportunity, the people spoke. It's now time for you to bow out and let the Commissioners that were elected get to work. Thank you.
Our next speaker is John Stanley.
I'm John Stanley, and I live in Kannapolis, and I'm on the Cabarrus Veterans Coalition Board. Pardon my allergies with this weather. These meetings are always fascinating, by the way. The largest group of veterans in the country, North Carolina and Cabarrus County, are the Vietnam veterans. North Carolina has more Viet vets than any other state on its border. The most reliable voters in the country are veterans, seniors, followed by their family and friends. All that the Vietnam veterans are looking for is recognition of their service, and renaming of the county park would be a major step in that direction. I'm here tonight because of a meeting that was held with the mayor and city manager of Kannapolis on Friday morning of July 11th. The mayor was annoyed that, one, he was not consulted earlier in the discussion of the renaming of the park, though there were discussions during the fall and winter at the county commissioners and the county parks meetings, where at the county park commissioners' meetings, the city has a representative. There was also a feature article in the Independent Tribune in January. Two, as my friend Nelson said, that the Vietnam Veterans County Park would take away from his Kannapolis Center City Veterans Park. The mayor ended the meeting by saying it would be on the agenda for the following Monday, July 14th, at the city council meeting. When we arrived for this meeting, we were informed that it was not on the agenda. However, we would be allowed to speak on the subject. After five impassioned speeches by Vietnam veterans, the mayor announced that he was deferring to the county commissioners on the subject of renaming the county park. That leads to a reasonable conclusion that he had discussions with the county commissioners earlier. The Vietnam veterans are the children of the greatest generation, and we lived up to that legacy. Today, many wrap themselves in the flag as a show of patriotism. We carry that flag and draped it over our comrades. We are the last generation of the veterans to be a part of a shared national sacrifice, and this is why we find our nation today in a conundrum, and that's another subject for a long drink. The Vietnam veterans are the only veterans in our country's history considered to have acceptable casualties by the political and military leaders of the time. Donald Shu, MIA-KIA, is the only Vietnam veteran to have been welcomed home in Cabarrus. Being the children of the greatest generation and baby boomers, we are no longer children, no longer to be bought by treats. We are those who carried our flag, covered our comrades, and came home to humiliation. We deserve our own seat at the adult table, bought and paid for in blood, sweat, and tears. Please, do the right thing by the Vietnam veteran.
Our next speaker is Wayne King.
Madam Chair, fellow Commissioners, I appreciate, excuse me, appreciate the opportunity to share some comments tonight. I have drastically changed what I had planned to say. When I got here this evening, I've been a resident of Cabarrus County more than 30 years and proud of that. But what I've heard tonight in terms of emotion and caring from my fellow citizens gives me the greatest confidence of where we are headed in this county. My concern is the tendency of the majority of this council to micromanage. Somehow, the big picture has gotten out of kilter here. One example is disregarding our county manager's budget to make our landfill operators county employees versus outsourcing the position. We have very competent county employees to make efficient and effective decisions, and we should leave it to those professionals with the appropriate financial guidance. I ask that you reconsider the budget cuts and make your decision with due process and diligence, including input from our residents. Thank you for your service on behalf of Cabarrus County.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mike Talent.
We raise it up. Good evening. My name's Mike Talent. I serve on the Midland Town Council in Midland, North Carolina, part of Cabarrus County, believe it or not. And I've got a map here this evening I won't point out to you, and as everyone up here... We'll turn it around that way in a moment. But as you can see, these are county facilities, all right? What I want to draw your attention to is this. Look at where all the county facilities are, all right? Let's start down in Midland. There's the school. Don't forget that one, all right? You go north from there, this is Mount Pleasant. Now, there's two or three little things out here. Then you... Oh, goodness gracious, look at Concord and Kannapolis and Harrisburg. There's all kind of county services in that area. But when you get outside of this immediate area, what have you got out here? Nothing, okay? As a past county manager was so eloquent to point out to us, people in Midland don't go to the Health Department. I wonder why not? Well, I can tell you exactly why not. If you live down here in Midland, look where the county Health Department is. It's about as far away and stay in this county as you can be. Now, does that really make a lot of sense? My point tonight is this... Go ahead and turn around that way and let everybody else see it. My point is this, okay? You do real well. Of the budget cuts that were made, what percentage of those budget cuts came from down here? I can tell you exactly how much. Two-thirds of them, okay? The library, okay. It's not going to be ready in time. We can deal with that, all right? But as far as we're going to have the park on here, and I said, "Wait a minute. The park isn't going to exist for now," all right? Folks, it's quite simple. If you're going to put all your county infrastructure and all of your county stuff up here, what's the logical explanation of having the folks that live out here in these areas that pay the same county tax as the ones that live right here where there's like seven or eight little issues right there? What's the point of having these folks that live down here that pay the same county tax pay the same as these folks up here, okay? It's time for some county services in southern Cabarrus County. The time is now. The park has been in the works for seven years. Let's don't stop. Let's move on forward. Let's make this a reality, and let's treat the citizens that don't happen to live in this high-dense area, let's make them part of our county as well. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Kathy Kitts.
I got the model really well, didn't I?
Otherwise known as Map Holder.
Tonight, I want to come to you... I came back right before the primary, and I was told that, you know, library wouldn't be cut, parks wouldn't be cut, you know, all these different things wouldn't be cut. But then they were. I just, I can't believe anything that I get from the three of you for that point, and the park was cut. You know, we have worked on that project for seven years. Some of you weren't around here for seven years ago. You know, I've been here for 24 years. Yes, I was born in West Virginia and I moved here, but I have come to a great county, and I am embarrassed by what happened here for the budget. That was embarrassing. We have citizens of Midland ask, "Well, why did they cut it?" Guess we're not going to get that, just like the rest of the stuff. We never get it. So, you know, we are working really hard to bring things to Midland, and I guess we're just going to have to continue working pretty hard to bring things there by ourselves on some of this stuff. Because, you know, we pay the same tax rate as everybody else, as Mr. Talent just pointed out, and we have worked our butts off to get things done. And people say, "Well, you're awful direct, Ms. Kitts." You know what? I'm fighting for my community, and if it's not part of Cabarrus County, then you know what? We need to get a change in tax rate. We work hard, and our citizens work hard, and we want the economic development stuff to come to our community and to our county. We're proud when we hear that Concord got something or Kannapolis got something. I admire those groups, but you know what? We're working just as hard now, and if we can't get that support, then we're going to continue pushing our efforts. And I thank Mr. Burridge for looking at putting something on to the new business for further discussion tonight. And I really... It makes me upset when my son, who is a rising junior at Central Cabarrus, looks at me and says, "You know what? Why did they take away all that money, Mom? I thought that they were supposed to work together." So I'm explaining to my 16-year-old why that was done, and you know, it's embarrassing to have to explain to him what happened. And I just really want you all to think about what you did and the impact. You heard it tonight. You didn't get to hear it back in June because you didn't let us talk. We didn't know the budget cuts were coming. But you have to open up the door and talk to people. You can't make decisions in closed... You can't make decisions in closed minds. We do it every time in Midland. We are talking about everything and getting it done. So thank you all for your hard work, but look at what you're doing. Make it right, because you haven't done it yet.
Our next speakers, plural, Ed and Jenny Brassfield.
Good evening. I'm Ed Bracefield. My wife Jenny. We've been residents here for 25 years. We're newcomers, I guess. But thank you for the opportunity to speak to you. There's been too much negative talk about the attempt to reduce the debt, and we feel the commissioners did the right thing. You have a debt of 469 million, which is way too high. Pay as you go instead of using taxpayers' money for interest. Pay the existing loans down and pay less interest and use that money for county needs. The county needs to run as individuals run their homes. We all have our wants, and if we can't afford it, we save until we can. It's foolish to pay so much interest when that money could be used to run the county. We have a society that wants to have it now, while we have worked for 20 or 30 years to get. But they want it now. So they go deep in debt and both have to work, hold jobs to pay the loans. The county can't do that. The only way to get more money is to raise taxes or to do what was voted on, and that is to reduce the debt, pay less interest, and use the money for county needs. Many of us are on fixed incomes and cannot afford the tax increases that will be needed if spending is not taken under control. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Charles Reed.
This is not my normal forte, so first time I've ever spoken to a group of you guys like this. But I felt like I needed to do this as, as just listening to the other people. It seems that we're, as a unit, very disappointed in some of the things that happened in this, with this governing agency. You know, we've heard a lot of different talks about honesty and integrity and transparency in government and all of these sort of things, but I think we saw the least transparency that I think we've ever seen in our group. And I was very disappointed that this was the direction it was chosen to happen. As far as I know, it is still a free country. We have rules and regulations to do the things that we should be doing, and we have people vote for you guys to, to abide by those rules. And I, I was really, probably more than anything, just disappointed that. And that's why I thought I would come and at least say my piece. I think it is still a government of the people, by the people, and for the people. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Carl Palmer.
Madam Chairman, Manager Downs, and Board Members. In the 1700s, 1770s, 1790s, a fellow by the name Edwin Burke was a parliamentarian in England, and he made some very wise, I think, statements about government. And one of those was that bad things happen when good people fail to do anything. So I'm here tonight to join with what I believe to be a lot of good people who have come forward to bring to your attention the negative side of the budget actions that have been The, the library certainly is going to be affected, and if there's a place where a wide majority of the families and budgets in this county are affected is the use of the library. Not everybody can go to Books-A-Million and spend $100. I was happy to see that the changes, the backing away of the vote on the farm has taken place, and that's encouraging. I'd like to encourage you to go a step further and think about some of these other things. One in particular, and I have some budget experience, having worked with the town of Harrisburg for about 15 years as, as a mayor and town administrator. I also spent several years in that period of time working with the Economic Development Board here in Cabarrus County. And when, those who want to criticize economic development, the general thing that gets parroted is, well, it's just throwing money away. Well, that's not true. I'd like to correct that misnomer and say that the money spent by the county in economic development is always a better return than the money gets spent. And so to bring that, the other issues have been addressed here tonight, and they're all important, but having spent some time on that one, I'd like to address a, a little bit of the detail. Over the last 16 years, the economic development programs in Cabarrus County have produced an increase in property values in the amount of $1,670,443,000. And the effect on taxes is $200 million of additional taxes to the county over 16 years. Did we give a lot of money away to get that? Not necessarily. The grants paid out by the county in that period of time were $30,700,000. The net taxes received was $169,000, uh, $169 million, I'm sorry. So we spent $30 million to get $200 million, a net gain of $170 million. Economic development is another one of the issues I'm asking you to revisit, along with the others that have been mentioned by the folks here tonight. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Grace Galloway.
Madam Chair, County Commissioners, my name is Grace Liam Galloway. I am a proud Vietnam veteran. I spent three years, three and a half years in Vietnam, and I want to tell you that one of the things that this great country did that was an outrage and a disgrace was when this country turned its back on the Vietnam veteran. 58,285 names are on that wall, including eight women. All the women that went to Vietnam were volunteers. Not a single woman was drafted to go to Vietnam, unlike the 3 million young men that were drafted to go. They went. They didn't go to Canada. They didn't run away. They went. They served their country. And they came back to a tremendous amount of ridicule. They were called baby killers. They had to change out of their uniforms at the airport into civvies because people would spit on them and people would call them names. These are young men who, all they did, their only crime was that they served their country. They went and they served their country when their country called. The only thing we ask now, we Vietnam veterans, we ask you to do something that will cost you nothing, but will mean so much to all of us. We ask that you name this park the Vietnam Veterans Park. It costs you zero, nothing, but it sure does and will make a tremendous difference because it is time. It is time that we thank the Vietnam veteran. I think everyone in this room knows somebody or maybe themselves served in Vietnam. That was a war that was very unpopular. That was a war that nobody wanted, but we did. We went. And so I only ask that. I ask that you please consider this very, very seriously. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Tammy Whaley.
I'm somewhat embarrassed to say that I hesitated to come and speak tonight. This is not part of my comments. I hesitated because I didn't want to take the time. I was a little nervous. I was scared. I didn't know what to expect. I'm embarrassed about that tonight because it, isn't it a right and a privilege and a responsibility to stand up and, and talk about what you believe in? And, and aren't we blessed to live in a country where we're free to elect the people that we want to lead us? Aren't we blessed? And veterans, thank you. Thank you that, that we have this right. I am Tammy Whaley. My husband owns a small business in Cabarrus County. We live in Cabarrus County. I work for Duke Energy. I'm an Economic Development Manager. Economic development is what I do, is my passion. I work across 10 counties. Cabarrus County is one of those counties. I'm here to voice concern over the recently approved county budget. While there's many areas of concern of that budget, I did want to speak specifically to what, to what I am most knowledgeable about, and that's economic development. The mission of the Economic Development Corporation, I'll refer to that as the EDC from this point forward, is to support existing business and recruit new business in such a way that the tax base of Cabarrus County and the employment opportunities of the citizens of Cabarrus County are expanded and diversified. I believe it is a responsibility of both the county and city governments as well as private businesses to support and fund economic development. The creation of jobs and capital investment, it does not happen accidentally, and it does not happen without a team that intentionally supports economic, supports existing businesses, markets this community, and actively recruits new companies to this county. There must be adequate funding to support the economic development function in this county. In the past six months, there has been a significant increase in economic development activity across the 10 counties that I represent and especially in economic development. Our economic development staff is committed, engaged, and passionate. They work nights, they work weekends, because that's what you do in this business. And their efforts are paying off. For the first time ever in this county, we have five spec buildings in some phase of development. It has driven and increased our economic development activity. It has increased the interest in site consultants and companies that are looking for future locations for their company. It's unfair to the businesses and the citizens of this county that funding was eliminated. I urge you to please reinstate the funding of economic development in this county. We are missing opportunities. This is not the time to cut funding. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mike O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam Chairman and Commissioners. I want to talk about our libraries. Our libraries in Concord, Kannapolis, Harrisburg, and Mount Pleasant are staffed by dedicated and resourceful individuals who go beyond the call of duty to provide assistance to the residents of our communities. Our libraries facilitate the flow of information. They provide opportunities for folks, young and old, to participate in educational and enrichment programs and activities. They provide access to computers for those who don't have access. You can do historical and genealogical research in the Concord Library. You can read newspapers and magazines. You can even check out books. I'm a serious user of the libraries, and I'm always impressed by the energy I feel when I go into those facilities. Our libraries serve not only a broad swath of our county, but are essential to, essential to the well-being of the county. The recent staff reductions, a huge step in the wrong direction in my opinion, have damaged the libraries in several ways. They've damaged morale in the entire system. The employees who are left do their best to take up the slack while wondering who might be the next to go. Reduced staff means fewer people to handle routines, routine transactions like checking out books. There are times when people wanting to check out books are inconvenienced by the inordinately long lines caused by fewer staff people to assist with checking out. Reduced staff means that fewer programs can be offered. The four positions, positions lost in Concord, amounting to 24% full-time equivalent staff, need to be refilled with all deliberate speed. But more than that's needed. The recession caused our library system and all others in the area to endure reductions in staff and hours. We went from six days a week to five days in 2010 and have stayed there. This has become the new normal. But it's not normal. It's seriously not normal. It's put us in a class all by ourselves. As the effects of the recession decreased, all other libraries in the area got back up to speed straight away, while we continued to live with the new normal. A few examples I got from the webpages of the libraries in the area. Apparently, there are three libraries in Rowan County, and they're all open six days a week. In Stanley County, which has not nearly the economic basis Cabarrus. The Albemarle and Locust Libraries are open six days a week, and other branches open fewer. Even in Anson County, probably one of the poorest counties in the area, the libraries open six days a week. Three of the four Union County libraries are open seven days a week, Monroe, Indian Trail, and Marshville. Many libraries in Mecklenburg are open six days a week and others fewer days. Got one more paragraph. Thank you. We should be open six days a week in order better to serve our communities. We shouldn't be in a class by ourselves with respect to library hours. We're better than that. We can do better than that, and we should do better than that, and sooner rather than later.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ronald Crawley.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. I come before you tonight to speak on the question of the Vietnam Park. And I'm a longtime resident of Cabarrus County, and I speak as Commander Concord American Legion Post. The article in the paper with the respect to the, all due respect to the mayor of Kannapolis, that it might be confusing to people to have a second park named for veterans or something along that line, I think is a very weak argument. The involvement of the United States in Vietnam, Southeast Asia actually predates World War II, when we were there as advisors prior to December the 7th, when it was known as Indo-China, French Indo-China. And of course, the call went out, we need some help. And once again, America tried to do the right thing, and we did. And then, of course, December the 7th, we were asked again to go out and do the right thing, and of course, we did. And then at the conclusion of World War II, the communists, of course, at the time, the Chinese communists, the Russian communists, the Eastern European Bloc communists, all did whatever they could to support communist North Vietnam to undermine South Vietnam, which was experimenting with exactly what we're doing here tonight in representative democracy. So the call went out, again, give us some help. The young lady that spoke earlier said how blessed we were, that we can, we can come here tonight and discuss these, these issues as communities, as Americans. The American forces that we fielded in Vietnam fought with great gallantry and bravery and were certainly the equal of any force that we've ever fielded, up and to, including today. Unfortunately, the, the war of being, without getting into the politics of it, but was very unpopular due to a number of reasons. The inequities of the draft, of course, and the timeline that went on, and of course, the, the no-win fight, but don't win, the famous line from, when do we get to win this time? You know, we followed in, in Korea. So we, we don't need to look again on, on the things that we did wrong. Now we have a chance to once again do something right. I look at the renaming of this park not only to, to honor the 85,000, I'm sorry, 58,000 I look at the renaming of this park not only to honor the 85,000, I'm sorry, 58,000 who gave their lives in Vietnam, and the millions who served, men and women, but also to our nation, that the parents, the mothers and fathers, and sons and daughters today, grandchildren of the people that served. And our country went through that great turmoil. Those of you that might remember the time of the dropout and the counterculture and all of those things. So I think today, once again, we can do the right thing. And I'm asking you to consider looking at this park as the Vietnam Veterans Park, to not only honor the men who served, the men and women and all the people, but our country as a sort of a healing agent to our country that all of us sacrificed so much for. I thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Lynn Safrat.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. My name is Lynn Safrat, and I'm a resident of Kannapolis, where I serve as President of Castle &amp; Cook, North Carolina. We're the developers and owners of the North Carolina Research Campus. But I'm also the Chair of the Cabarrus County EDC Corporation, and that's why I'm here tonight. I'm here to voice my concern over the Commissioner's decision to eliminate funding for the EDC organization. And I'm really concerned in general, as many others here tonight, about the lack of transparency and the manner in which the budget was presented and approved. So my comments focus on the EDC and the impact that it's had on Cabarrus County, and why it's really critical that we continue to financially support economic development and the Economic Development Organization in the future. I'm sure you know that the mission of the EDC is to support both existing business and to recruit new business in such a way that we expand and diversify our tax base and employment opportunities for the citizens of Cabarrus County. The EDC is dependent on funding from the county, as well as private investments from companies throughout our region. Right now, we have 39 active projects, and in June alone, our staff responded to seven requests for information from outside of our state. Recently, our staff illustrated to this board what is involved in responding to a typical RFI. And in that illustration, we shared that it takes about 190 emails, 90 phone calls, and over 20 meetings invested in just one project. It's a lot of work. And the response from this board after that presentation, we thought, was both positive and reassuring. Since 2012, Cabarrus County EDC staff has actively engaged and very closely worked with either new company or existing company projects that have resulted in nearly $296 million of investment and the creation of over 350 jobs. But because the county has eliminated funding, the EDC will not be able to fill positions that we now have that are open to continue the current level of activity and support. That's the loss of jobs and benefits. That's why we need adequate funding to support the EDC in this county. I'm sure you realize this is a very competitive business. Other counties, other states, and even other countries are recruiting new businesses. So what message are you sending to new businesses right now throughout our state and our region? Are you saying that Cabarrus County is closed for business, that economic development is not important to you? It was stated in the recent budget motion that the county was not satisfied because the EDC is managed by the Chamber of Commerce. At no time have any of you ever expressed that concern to me as Chair, or to the best of my knowledge, to any other member of our EDC Board. In fact, our new CEO reached out personally to each one of you, each Commissioner, and was led to believe, I think, that you were in support of economic development. It was also stated, sorry, thank you for your time tonight. I just wanted to say it was also stated that the EDC subsidized the Chamber of Commerce. And I just want to tell you, as Chair of EDC, that is absolutely not true. The EDC is a separate organization. It's financially independent, it's not-for-profit, just like the Chamber of Commerce, but each organization has their own Board of Directors and is responsible for its own funding and the way it operates its program of work. So thank you for your time and for listening to me tonight.
Our next speaker, and I apologize if I mispronounce, Andrew Thulis.
I won't say that it was your handwriting that gave me a little contemplation, but thank you, I'm glad I got it right, thank you.
Me too, thank you. Commissioners, I'd like to thank you first and foremost for authorizing the county attorney to work with the CFSA to craft an agreement to transition operational management of the Elma C. Lomax Incubator Farm to the CFSA. I'd also like to thank Roland McReynolds and the CFSA for working with the Cabarrus County stakeholders to develop a plan to continue running the incubator farm, free of all funds from county taxpayers. Lastly, I'd like to thank the thousands of folks who sign their names in support of saving the incubator farm. Three months ago, my family and I relocated ourselves to the county. It was not an easy move for us to make, physically or financially, but with great effort, we arrived, allured by a county that seemingly valued agricultural enterprise, rural life, and respect for the land, values that in this day and age are difficult to come by, values that are degrading rapidly, dissipating daily. But not in Cabarrus County, we told ourselves, not here. In Cabarrus County, they value the land, the soil, the earth, they respect it, they understand it. And so we moved, becoming members of a county with a program so forward in thought, so forward in value, that definitively, they would earmark their place in state history. But that program has been in peril, its future uncertain. What will become of the Elma C. Lomax Incubator Farm? Is it to crumble like a value long forgotten? Is the land endowed with such long-forgotten spirit to degrade, to become another commodity undervalued by lesser souls? I hope not. What I hope, Commissioners, is that you see the value in such a program, such a facility, that you appreciate the work of an Elma C. Lomax incubator farmer who procures from these lands sustenance of an exceptional quality. So I implore you, Commissioners, see the merit of the Elma C. Lomax Incubator Farm. Hold steady the vision that it is possible, dare I say imperative, for our community secure its own nutritional sovereignty. And may the hard work and financial investments of our farmers, our county, and our lands not be made in vain. May the newest generation of Cabarrus County farmers have your support. May the Elma C. Lomax Farm and all its future graduates proudly serve the people of this county. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jack Ward.
Madam Chairman, Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity. Obviously, this hat might indicate what I'd like to talk to you about, and that's the naming of the park, the Vietnam Park. My reason is quite simple. I served there. I was there 13 months, two weeks, and two days. I was a combat corpsman with the 3rd Marines. We saw death and destruction, and I'm sure there are a lot of gentlemen in this room that did. We came back, and we were not treated like human beings. We were treated like something less, let's put it that way. Long about 10, 12 years ago, there was a movement around, and people started getting pride in the American soldier once again. And that was attributed to the Vietnam-era soldiers. We didn't want anyone else to feel the same hurt that we felt. So we came back, we organized, we helped get the programs going to welcome home these soldiers that are coming back today. I'm also the district manager, district chairman, if you will, for the American Legion here in Cabarrus County, of which we have nine American Legion posts and probably a little over 650 veterans in this county alone. Of that 650 members that are in the American Legion, over 45% are Vietnam vets. We would be proud that you would name this park as a tribute to the Vietnam vets. Thank you, ma'am, thank you.
Our next speaker is Dennis Johnson.
It's my pleasure to be here, and I'm glad you all are here too. It's good to see you all. I do have a few things. You know, a lot of people talking, a lot of stuff tonight, and I think a lot of people getting rather rude. I want to talk about cutbacks, you know, and talk about my son for just a moment. He's a Marine, he's been in the Marine Corps for 10 years now. And he is down, he's stationed down at Campbell's June right now. He did two tours in Iraq, he's got a, he's a Purple Heart recipient. And he does okay. They get paid a lot different than I did when I was in the Army back in the 70s, so. Next year, if he does not make E6, which the, if the spot does not come open, he has to get out. After, he'll have 11 years in. I want to use that as an example for cutbacks. And that's a terrible thing, because he wants to do 20 years, but if he can't fill that gap, he's gone. And they will toss him, you guys, you all know what they're doing to our military right now. You want to get the Army down to 540,000, and they want to get the Marine Corps down to 173,000. Okay, I said that. My biggest concern as far as being a resident here in Cabarrus County is the long-term debt. All this other stuff, I'm not really all that big on it. I try to keep up with everything, but the long-term debt is what's going to get us. Most of us that are here won't live long enough to pay it, to pay it off. And I remember Mr. Burge mentioned that we paid a $15 million interest payment not long ago. That's a ton of money. And I think people need to reprioritize themselves and figure out exactly what it is they do want. Instead of going with an emotion, you need to go with the reality. That's my opinion, okay? Libraries are a big, big deal. I'm not seeing where you can't get all the information, you get off Google. That's where I go. I haven't stepped in a library in 20 years. Maybe that's at my loss, but that's, Google, you can get anything you want on the internet. Everybody knows that. So I'm not seeing what the big fuss is about the libraries, other than it employs a lot of people. Recently, my beloved Kannapolis raised the taxes, the property rate, went up, they knocked it up four points. They went from $49 million with their budget annually, up to $54 million. Do they, do they need it? I don't think so. I can't see where the $49 million went. Because if you drive around Kannapolis and have a good look around, I'm hard-pressed to see anywhere the money has gone. So that's all I have to say about Kannapolis. I love Kannapolis. It's a good place to live. Thank you, I made my points. Oh, by the way, I appreciate all you, what you do, Mr. O'Strye, Mr. Burge, Mr. Miesmer, and it's great when you can work for your parents. I love it.
Our next speaker is Margaret Dabs.
I appreciate the opportunity to speak about a place that I love dearly, that my parents grew up here, my mom did, and my grandparents. I've got several generations. I was born in Indianapolis, I want that disclaimer out there right now, but my mom brought my dad home soon. Short and sweet, what I want to say is I hope I never hear another person lose their job publicly that did not know it was coming. I hope another family never has to go through that. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Richard Flo.
Madam Chair, Members of the Commission, my name is Richard Flo. I'm a Kannapolis resident, a Cabarrus County resident for 27 years. And first of all, I recommend a support for the name change for the park. But I'm here to talk to you a little bit about economic development. That's so critical to this county. And many of you may be close to it, many of you may not be close to it. But there's a theory behind it, and it's called economic base theory. And it has to do with the location dynamics and the location economics of corporate decision-making. It's not accidental, it's not incidental, and it's not based on just purely subjective criteria. It's a competitive world out there. And I'm a taxpayer in my home, I'm also a taxpayer on office property. And so I pay my share of taxes, not as many as many people, and probably more than some. But I fully support a share of my taxes going to the Economic Development Initiative. Because without the basic sector, and this is the root of economic base theory, without the basic sector, those companies that import, excuse me, that export our goods and service to import dollars into our community, then the rest of the business community doesn't have a purpose, the restaurant, the doctor's office, other than to serve a bedroom community. And if you really want high taxes, then lead us towards a bedroom community. If you want a low tax rate, lead us towards the prosperity and the valuation that comes with economic, basic economic development, so that our businesses have something to lean on. You know, we exported textiles from this community for decades, exported throughout the country and throughout the world. That brought in dollars that circumvented, excuse me, that circulated through the community to those doctor's offices, or restaurants, or businesses of all types. If we eliminate that, if we lose that piece of the puzzle, then as our population grows, the tax burden will be on the resident, with a few businesses that tend to cater to the resident. So in closing, please, fund our EDC. We need that. They do good work. They work hard for us. I see it every day in my work. And last but not least, and this is the hard part for me, we can agree to disagree. All of us can. But when we disrespect our governmental system, that's a sin, it's a shame. Open government, whether you're pro-this and that, or anti-this and that, the one thing we as Americans are supposed to have in common is open government. And when a decision is made without regard for all but three of the citizens of this county, then I would recommend to rescind and resign. Thank you.
I have a few more cards. All of these address the bond, so I'm going to wait on those. If I didn't call your name, I have three cards. And those are all the yellow cards that I have at this time for the public comments. And I'm not certain if Ms. Safrat is still here, because I keep forgetting to make a note, but I think she stepped out. But I do want to say, which I know everybody here knows, is that her daughter, Elizabeth Safrat, resident of Kannapolis, is now Miss USA and will be competing for Miss World. That's pretty cool in Cabarrus County, to have somebody competing for Miss World and everything else that she's doing. And I didn't want to interrupt her comments when she was here, and I meant to say that at the beginning of the meeting. So congratulations to Elizabeth, and to everybody in the family, and certain that she will represent the area and the United States very well, as she proceeds. Commissioners, if you will now look at the consent agenda. And just as a reminder, on the consent agenda, we have 1, 2, 6, 7, and 8. So at this time, I would accept a motion to approve the consent agenda with those items. Do I have a motion? I have a motion, is there a second? There's a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, thank you. And next to new business, let me get to that in my agenda. The first item that we have is the General Obligation Bond Referendums. Ann Wilson is here, and Steve is here. We are going to have two different public hearings, and I know that, I think, Commissioners, you're aware of that. I'm not certain if the general public is. I'll turn it over to Ann.
Good evening. Yes, we have come to the point where we have a five-phase process for each bond issue. First, we need to have the public hearing, then we need to vote on the bond order for that section, authorize publication of the bond order, call for the referendum on the bond order, and then adopt a reimbursement resolution for the project. And so we're going to start with the Community College. So I guess what we need to do is start with the public hearing.
Sorry. So at this time, I'll have you have a seat if you will. We're going to start with Community College. I do have, let me look and make sure, yes, I have three cards to speak. So I will open the public hearing for all those interested in speaking for or against the General Obligation Bond for Rowan Cabarrus Community College. So I'm going to start with the three cards I have, and then if anyone else would like So I'm going to start with the three cards I have, and then if anyone else would like to speak, I'll open it up to you. So first is Dr. Rod Townley.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. My name is Rod Townley. I'm the Academic Vice President at Rowan Cabarrus Community College. One of the primary goals of the community college is to prepare a well-trained workforce. And it is in pursuit of that that we intend to construct an advanced technology center on our south campus here in Cabarrus County. The Advanced Technology Center will house instructional programs that will prepare students for jobs in a variety of technical areas. They would be like advanced manufacturing, robotics, computer-integrated design, and information technologies. Currently, we are completely out of space for our technical programs, and that means that we can't update them, we can't buy new equipment, we just don't have anywhere to put it. And that is a huge problem when we can't update our equipment because industry wants us to do that so that we have current and up-to-date training. The Advanced Technology Center would allow us to update our equipment and expand programs, even to create new programs, that will prepare students for high-tech, high-wage, and clean industry jobs. And we will be producing a more productive workforce for our industry partners, something that they are asking for continually. I think it's important to note that in developing these training programs, we solicit a great deal of input from all of business and industry, so that we can understand their specific needs and develop programs that are catered exactly to them, so that we can meet our goal of producing graduates that are 100% work-ready. Our intention is to serve the community in the most important way that we can, and that is to prepare the citizens of this county for stable, high-wage jobs for the future. We believe that building an advanced technology center will be a tremendous value to our students, to the local community, and to local industry. Thank you in advance for your commitment to and your investment in your community, and thank you for your commitment to Rowan Cabarrus, your community college.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Anthony Rossi.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Anthony Rossi, and I am the student body president of Rowan Cabarrus for upcoming school year. And on behalf of the Student Government Association, I am proud to support the $9 million bond for the development of Advanced Technology Center. While I'm not personally pursuing a career in advanced technology or manufacturing and technology, I can speak highly of the caliber of education that Rowan Cabarrus is providing to my fellow classmates and myself. We are so lucky to have such a dynamic college right here in Cabarrus County. People pay a lot of money to attend private universities, to enjoy small classes and individual attention that we receive at Rowan Cabarrus. Since 1963, Rowan Cabarrus has educated well over half a million students, and has developed and delivered programs to meet the demands of our local community. With this bond, the college can continue to serve our community. I am proud to be a student at Rowan Cabarrus. I think the college is worth the investment. I think my peers are worth the investment. I think that the community is worth this investment. I know personally that Rowan Cabarrus has the right people put in the right places, so that we could be as effective and efficient as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Janet Spriggs.
Good evening. My name is Janet Spriggs, and I'm the CFO at Rowan Cabarrus Community College. Thank you for the opportunity to comment on the proposed $9 million bond for RCCC. In 1991, we became the first multi-campus community college in North Carolina when we added the Cabarrus South Campus. Today, five of the college's seven campuses and training sites are located in Cabarrus County. The $9 million bond, along with your pledge of an additional $2 million, will be used to construct an advanced technology center. The $11 million investment provides most, but not all, of the $12.3 million that we need to complete this project, and we are already working to secure additional funding to help fill the $1.3 million gap. 95% of the students we train at RCCC stay here in North Carolina, often choosing to live, work, and raise their families right here in Cabarrus County. So you can see that the lifelong education, training, and retraining that we provide plays a vital role both now and for generations to come. And I have a personal story as an illustration. Most of us have been touched in one way or another by the recent recession. My family was no exception. My son received his first community college degree at another community college in Marine Electronics, and he secured a great job in that field. Life was great for Kevin until the recession hit in full force, and the owners of the yachts that his company renovated no longer had cash to spend on the luxuries. His company eventually went bankrupt, and he tried but could not find a job in that field that would provide him with a viable, sustainable living. His chosen field was far from recession-proof. He was single in his mid-20s, and fortunately, he had his parents to fall back on. He moved home with us, but with the caveat that he would return to school. He enrolled at Rowan Cabarrus in the information technology program, and now he's about 12 credits shy of earning his associate's degree. But he was able to take advantage of our certification programs, earning multiple IT industry standard certifications. His favorite instructor teaches for us part-time and works full-time for a prominent international company with a facility in Cabarrus County. When that company was adding to their IT workforce, he encouraged my son to apply and provided an excellent recommendation. I am sure that you can tell that I'm a proud mother. I'm also very happy to say that not only will Kevin graduate with his associate's degree this year, but he's also entered our local workforce with that company as an IT support technician right here in Cabarrus County. He's now earning a very competitive and viable wage in a sustainable profession. Education is one of the best investments that anyone can make. It provides a compass for students to navigate forward, and it truly changes lives. Your previous investments have already improved the lives of countless individuals, their families, and this community. Thank you for your commitment to our Advanced Technology Center, and please be assured that Rowan Cabarrus will use this investment wisely, strategically, and efficiently to help shape the future for our community, a future that offers hope and opportunity to all. Thank you.
Hey, those are the cards that I had, and so that's why I called on them first. Is there anyone that would also like to speak for or against the general obligation bond for Rowan Cabarrus Community College? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Mr. Kredel, I presume that we need to go ahead and do the five different steps now, and then we'll do the same again. Okay. So Commissioners, if you're looking on page 134 of your agenda, down towards the bottom, it has requested action. So we have held the public hearing, so at this time, we need to have a motion to adopt the order authorizing $11, I'm sorry, $9 million in community college bonds. Do I have such a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion, and there is a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have a motion to adopt the resolution calling for a special bond referendum on November the 4th, 2014. Do I have such a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we need a motion to authorize the publication of the bond orders as adopted. Do I have such a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, we need a motion to authorize the publication of notice of the bond referendum. Do I have such a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And next, a motion to adopt reimbursement resolutions for this project. Do I have such a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next, we will go to the public hearing for school bonds, and that's $11 million for Cabarrus County schools. So at this time, I will open the public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak for or against the school bonds for Cabarrus County schools? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. And Commissioners, we have the same motions that we previously did. The first motion is a motion to adopt the order authorizing $11 million in school bonds. Do I have such a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Okay. The next motion is to adopt a resolution calling for a special bond referendum on November the 4th, 2014. Do I have such a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Next, we have a motion to authorize the publication of the bond orders as adopted. Do I have such a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Next, we need a motion to authorize the publication of notice of the bond referendum. Do I have such a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And last, we need a motion to adopt reimbursement, the reimbursement resolution for this project. Do I have such a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion's carried. Thank you very much. Okay, the next item concerns the Elma C. Lomax Incubator Farm. Kelly, there you are. Kelly Siffert is here. I think Roland McReynolds is here also.
Yes, I'm not sure if he's made it to the room, but he should be here in a second. Okay. He, I think, was out. Staff has worked with Mr. McReynolds, as directed by the board, to come up with a proposed agreement. He has been in contact with Mr. Cook. I believe Mr. Cook is prepared to share with you the plan that they have come up with, and Mr. McReynolds is here to answer questions if you have any.
So, Mr. Cook, do you want to...
Madam Chair, I'll be happy to. I think each of the Commissioners have before you a copy of the proposed temporary operating agreement for the Elma C. Lomax Incubator Farm Park. This document was crafted in conjunction with Mr. Roland McReynolds, with reference to, or in his capacity as the Executive Director of the Carolina Farm Stewardship Association. They have agreed to take over the temporary operation of the park, effective September 1st of 2014, through the end of this year, December 31st, 2014, with the understanding or the idea that there'll be a transition of a more permanent arrangement for operation of the park, either through their association or through a separate nonprofit, to be discussed at a later time. The way this has been set up is that the county will continue to be the owner of the real estate at the farm park. It'll continue to be the lesssee of the one acre that is owned by Franklin Lomax. The CFSA will step into the county's shoes for operating purposes, subject to final approval of the county with reference to any changes that may be effectuated out there. They will also step up and undertake all the ongoing expenses of the park, whether that be the lease to Mr. Lomax, the lease payment to Mr. Lomax, that is, the utilities and some of the other operating expenses that exist with reference to the park. Again, that'll start September 1st. It'll go until there's a more permanent agreement approved by the Commission, or till the end of this year, whichever first occurs. There is a list of the county's assets, the personal property assets that attach to the document. The way it's proposed for this to be handled under this temporary agreement is for CFSA to be able to use those assets without charge during this temporary operating period. And of course, there'll be a discussion about transition of those assets when the more permanent agreement is discussed. But in the meantime, those assets will still belong to the county. They will be entitled to be used by CFSA and the farmers who are utilizing the park. And of course, if there are any additional assets purchased by CFSA for use of the park, those would be owned by CFSA. We've made provision for indemnification, insurance issues, the typical things you would see in an agreement where another entity is utilizing county assets and county facilities. We've tried to keep it very straightforward, and certainly if there's any changes to any of the programs or any of the existing agreements out at the park, those would be subject to county approval before any of those kind of changes could be made. That essentially summarizes the provisions of this agreement. We've tried to keep it simple and straightforward, understanding that it is, in fact, a temporary agreement with the idea that there'll be a more permanent arrangement that will be negotiated at a later time.
Did you want to add anything, Mr. Downs? I don't know if you do at this time.
No, ma'am. The list of the capital items there, those are the, that is the list that were funded 100% by the county. There are some others out there that are funded by grants, but we did not include them in this, in the information that you have tonight.
Okay. Is Mr. McReynolds, is he here? There you are. Sorry, I didn't look in the right direction.
No problem.
Would you like to add anything at this time?
Just that the Board of the Carolina Farm Stewardship Association is, and our members feel very strongly about the excellent work that has happened at the Lomax Incubator Farm over the last six, seven years, and we are glad to have an opportunity to help continue that mission and work, and I'd be glad to answer any questions that you all have.
Hi, Commissioners, are there any questions? What the requested action for tonight is, do you want us to approve this temporary contract, this temporary operating agreement? Is that the requested action?
Yes, you can do that, because Mr. McReynolds has been over it. I think it's acceptable to his organization. So I think we, you know, if it's the Board's pleasure, you could move forward with such a motion this evening.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions? You had a presentation at the work session. Yes, sir.
Mr. Cook, one of the questions I had asked at the work session was, the deed has a restriction in it that it be used for a certain purpose, otherwise it revert back to three people, I believe. Franklin Lomax, Betty Jewell Lomax, and Alexander Hamilton Lomax. And we had received a letter at the work session from Franklin Lomax, but I was, I had asked about whether we had concurrence from those other two people, and I was wondering if you had any update for that.
I have an update. I have not had any discussions myself with the other two Lomax heirs. Mr. Newton was working on that and had some sources to get some additional information on that. I understand he wasn't able to obtain much additional information. It is my understanding that aside from Franklin Lomax, one of the other two heirs is deceased, and so there's one remaining. What I can tell you is that I've actually been involved with this property since before the county took it over from the trust from Elma C. Lomax that deeded it to the county. There was actually some litigation involving that estate that didn't directly involve the county, and certainly not the county property that came from that estate and from that trust. No one with reference, or none of the heirs, with the exception of Franklin Lomax, has ever expressed any interest in this aspect of it. They, of course, were interested in this other, some other bequests and devises that were a part of that litigation and part of the estate, but not this one. So while I can't speak about the remaining heir and that heir's interest in it, there has never been any interest expressed in the farm park or the uses to which it has been made. And... And you do have a copy of Franklin Lomax's letter where he enthusiastically supported the uses that have been made of it up to this point, and also the uses that are going to be continued under this new arrangement. So while I can't speak for that other heir, I say they've never expressed any, I shouldn't say interest, because I guess I would characterize it that they had no objection to, to the fact that, that the mother had actually set this up for the county to have this land and to be used for the purposes that it's used. So in that way, I feel pretty confident that there was, would be no objection, but I can't say that I've spoken to him directly.
Mike, I have one question for you. Was the, did we buy a new tractor on the last day of the fiscal year for 2014, on June 30th?
I don't, there was a tractor that was purchased at the end, yeah, I guess it was. That's what it's showing here. I'm not sure when it was actually delivered.
So we purchased a tractor 14 days after we voted to not fund this anymore?
That's what we're gonna?
No, it was ordered prior to the meeting, and it was already on its way. That was the delivery date, I believe.
Okay, because our, our document here says purchase date, so I wanted to ask that question. I had not seen this before.
No, it was ordered prior to the meeting in June, so we didn't have any way to stop it at that point.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, apologize for that date, but it was delivered.
Okay, so is there any other questions, Commissioners? If not, we do have before, I'm sorry, were you?
I'm prepared to make a motion. And looking over the, the list of the capital purchases, there's just one thing on there that I have some concern about, and that is the closed-circuit TV system that I was not aware was out there. And so when I've been out there plundering around after hours, I'm sure it, that has been captured on tape, so, so I have not yet been arrested, but I beg forgiveness. But I would like to move that we authorize the county manager and the county attorney to proceed forward with this agreement with the Carolina Farm Stewardship Association, at the same time expressing my appreciation to them for stepping forward and helping us preserve an asset that I think is extremely valuable to Cabarrus County.
Okay, Commissioners, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Yeah, I, I would like to make a general comment before we-
That's why I was getting ready to ask.
Okay. You know, as I had mentioned in the work session, you know, we had talked about this two weeks ago, and I think that this is a great way to transition this into the private sector and being a nonprofit. And I said this at the work session, I know there's a lot of confusion and misinformation out there. I think that, you know, what is going on at the farm is an excellent program. I think it's, I think it's good for Cabarrus County. I think it's good for all the participants involved. And, you know, I grew up on family property that we, you know, grew vegetables and still currently do that. So, you know, I certainly value that as well. I just did not feel that this is a function of county government. So whenever you look at it in that aspect, there are certain functions of local governments of what they should and shouldn't do, and I do not believe this was a function of local government. So I'm happy for this to be transitioned into the private sector, into a nonprofit, and so I'm prepared to support this.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries. Next item is the renaming of North Cabarrus Park as Vietnam Veterans Park. Commissioners, you've received a lot of information on that. And let's see, we have, Tim's here, Bond is here, I don't know, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, Commissioners, Mr. Downs, Mr. Cook. I'm here tonight to request a motion to approve the renaming of the Cabarrus County Park as the Vietnam Veterans Park. If I could, I'd like to walk through the process that, that got us to this point. In December, the Cabarrus Veterans Coalition, John Stanley, who you heard, heard speak earlier, approached the Board at the work session in December with the idea of renaming the park from North Cabarrus Park to Vietnam Veterans Park. He was advised to go to the Active Living in Parks Commission to bring that idea to them, which he did, and they voted on, and it passed unanimously at that time. We want to fast forward to July 7th work session. We brought it up again. Between January and July, there was really nothing done on the idea. In July, the work session, we were, the Coalition was, was requested to speak to the City of Kannapolis, which we did on June 11th. And I was there. At the meeting, it was a productive meeting. No decision was made by Kannapolis whether or not they were going to approve it, back it, support it. They said that they were going to speak about it at their town council meeting. I was not at that meeting, but you heard the veterans speak about what happened at the meeting. So apparently, it's back here. The ball is now in the Commissioners' court. And from what I understand, I've been recently told that the, the idea was, has been endorsed by the Cabarrus Children's Home, which I believe has some ownership, partial ownership of the park itself. And now I'm here to request the Commissioners' vote on it.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Commissioners, or does anybody have any questions at this time?
Madam Chairman, just, just a couple of questions. And I'm, I've got the, and I appreciate you going back through that timeline.
Welcome.
Because, because I was present for all those discussions, and you conveyed that very accurately.
Thank you.
I personally did not realize, it didn't register with me, an issue between the two Veterans Parks, being in the City of Kannapolis. I think that they have done a marvelous job with the recognition that, that they have offered to Vietnam veterans, as well as all other conflicts in the newly renovated Veterans Park in downtown Kannapolis. I think the quote, I was quoted in the newspaper saying that that's not much to ask to, to recognize our Vietnam veterans, and I certainly stick with that comment. I was in hopes that, that you would meet with the folks in Kannapolis, come up with some agreeable solution, that you would come back to us and say, "We've got this all worked out, and everybody's happy." Unfortunately, it doesn't always work that way. We've heard quite a bit of that tonight. But I, I did want to point out that, excuse me, the information that we've received back from Kannapolis is that they had made a couple of offers to create a, a special recognition of Vietnam veterans at the existing Veteran Park in Kannapolis, as well as possibility of erecting a special memorial at the existing Northwest Cabarrus Park. And I just wondered if you had anything to share as to why those offers were not agreeable?
Well, they, they were discussed. John, you want to, you want to come up? Is it okay if John Stanley comes up? John Stanley, I think you've, remember him from earlier?
At the first meeting- Thank you. At the first meeting, I should take my gum out of my mouth, too. At the first meeting on Friday morning, he said, "Would you accept something else, something on the side?" There was no specific offer made to us. At the, and he said at that time it would be open for discussion at the city council meeting. It was not for discussion. It was taken off the agenda. At that meeting, at, at the city council meeting, he deferred it back to the Commissioners. So there was no specific thing, "Would you accept something on the side for the monument?" But there was nothing specific offered. And I said, "I would not make that decision for all the veterans." Of course, I wouldn't. So A, there was no specific orders. B, at the city coun, at the city council meeting the following Monday, he deferred back to the county Commissioners to make that decision. So, and there were no, nothing offered at the city council meeting.
I, I guess my next question would be, I mean, is the, is the door closed to that opportunity to-
There are other, you know, for, for the park, I think that the Veterans Park is, is one issue. The other issue would be the, the national commemoration, where the City of Concord is a commemorative partner already. The Kannapolis people said that they would want to be part of the 50th commemor, 50th commemoration. Those would be separate issues. So if, if, if he deferred to you, and there was no specific thing, then this has been, we've been talking about this, what, since October sometime? And making the three presentations, first one here about the 50th commemoration, the workshop, and at the Parks Commission, Senior Parks and Seniors Commission, where we was bounced back over, over to here. But his main objective or objection to the whole thing is that he wasn't brought into the loop. And we, as the veterans groups, were never told that the City of Kannapolis was, was in the loop. But, like I said, he has a member representative on the county, that's supposed to be at the county Commissioners, Parks Commissioners type of thing. And there was also an article in the paper in, on January 17th. So A, I think it's two separate issues. If he wants to participate in the national commemoration next year, we would certainly support that. But as far as we see it, this is a separate issue, because nothing specific has been offered. You know, having something set aside, by the way, well, that's, could be for the Vietnam veterans, the national commemoration. This is, this park is for all the veterans in Cabarrus County, not just Kannapolis, not just Concord, but even down to Midland. Which I would bet there's a few Vietnam veterans down there. So that's, that being offered, it has been no, say, "John, this, this is, this is our offer." No, there has been no offer, and he deferred back to the county. Thank you.
Great. Thank you for, for that, that update, that information. It's, I, I think it's good for us to have this discussion and to, you know, I think that the veterans that have spoken here tonight have done a good job of reminding us of the, the way some of the Vietnam veterans were received when they returned. It's, it's easy for me to forget that, because those, you may have heard me say it at the work session, I almost was one of those, and those returning Vietnam veterans were my cousins and school classmates and, you know, so, so I always held them in the highest of regard. But, you know, I think that, that all of us hope that we can have a win-win situation in every one of these deliberations that, that we get involved in here. So I just wanted to get a little background information as to, to how the discussion went, and I appreciate that information.
You're welcome. If I can just say something, too. This is in no way meant to diminish the park, the Veterans Park in Kannapolis. That's, that's a fantastic park and a great tribute to all the veterans of Cabarrus County. And if I can speak on John's behalf, this in no way diminishes that fact. Kannapolis does a great job of honoring their veterans, too. So I just want to get that point out there. We're not trying to diminish their efforts in, in what they do in the City of Kannapolis.
If I remember right, the Parks Department approved this at the meeting in January?
That's correct, January 16th meeting.
With that said, I'd like to make a motion to rename North Cabarrus Park as the Vietnam Veterans Park.
Okay, there is a motion and there is a second. Do you want to make any comments?
Yep. I, I want to thank all the veterans that are here. Thank you for my freedom. Thank you for my liberty. I appreciate you. It makes me very sad. I, I came down and I talked to the American Legion in, in Midland, and it was right after they had talked about, the, the only budget cut out there was to cut our veterans. And what really makes me sad is you men and ladies have been willing to, and some of you have sacrificed everything that you have for this country. And the people behind you that are in this country, we take that for granted. We don't sacrifice anything. And we, we, you know, are in the process of giving this country away in debt, $18 trillion in debt. You go fight out here, we give it away back behind you. This is the absolute least that we can do for you. You were treated horribly when you came back. I love history. I love political science. I love the Constitution. I've spent a lot of time studying that, and this is the very least we can do for you, and I will absolutely support the renaming of the park.
Okay, Commissioners, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you very much. The motion carries. Commissioners, the next item we have is the Kelly, Kelly Klutz, are you going to come up and talk about it? Or you're gonna? We'll let you come up. Purchase of it, as you've, you've got it on page 227 in your, in your book, purchase of additional land for the Northwest Area Elementary School, otherwise known as Odell Primary, I think, is one of the names I've heard. I'm not certain what the names are.
This isn't, this was not discussed at your work session. This, this became evident after we've had some conversations with the, the staff of schools, and it's now become to the point where they need to go ahead and make a decision so we're, so that they don't miss a deadline, so that, so that's why it came to you without going to the Board first, so.
Good afternoon. The Board of Education is seeking approval to purchase some land adjacent to the property that we currently own. Again, as we just spoke of, adjacent to the, the Odell area, the old Odell. We've not formally named that property. So the land that we are seeking to purchase is 6.35 acres of additional property, and I believe you have the, the price. We also need an additional $10,000 in that budget line item, 10,031. So we need approval to purchase, to go on into closing, and we need to move 10,031 into that line item to be able to do that. So we're seeking those two things tonight.
Pam, can you tell us, or Mike, can you tell us where that money's coming from? The $10,000? Do you, you already have it?
There's a line item that we're moving it from.
It's just moving money within their, their current budget. They're not asking for additional money.
Okay. I just want to clarify that. And the reason this is coming to us is, Commissioners, as you can see, based on North Carolina General Statute 115G-426F, a school board may not execute a contract to purchase a site or make any expenditure for it without the county Commissioners' approval as to the amount to be spent for the site. Commissioners, do you have any questions at this time? Okay, may I have a motion to approve the purchase of 6.35 acres of additional land and to approve the related budget revision for that purchase? I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, and then we moved item number four, now became item number five, and that is page 90, if you want to go back to that, reallocation of funds for school roofing and school projects. Okay, we'll open that up for discussion.
Madam Chairman.
I think the issue before us is another of the unintended consequences of the budget amendments passed at our last meeting. In light of the comments that we've heard from citizens tonight, as well as articles and letters to the editor of our newspaper, it is obvious to me that there are serious concerns about those last-minute budget adjustments made at our meeting on June 16th. I would like to move that we amend the county budget to revert to the version presented by the county manager and made available for public comment and consideration prior to the public hearing held on Monday, June 16th, 2014, and authorize the county manager to make such adjustments as might be reasonably accomplished as soon as possible. We request that the manager bring back recommendations to this Board of any adjustments that might not be practical as a result of the actions taken since our last meeting. I hope to obtain a second to this motion and have prepared- I hope to obtain a second to this motion and have prepared supporting comments for discussion.
Madam Chairman, I don't believe that that motion is even allowed.
I would have to ask the attorney.
Commissioner Osterreich, on what basis do you think that such a motion would not be in order?
Well, it's not on our agenda first. That's the first basis. The second basis is that per Roberts Rules of Order, I believe that you have to vote with the majority in order to bring an issue back up, and Commissioner Morris did not vote with the majority.
That's true if it's in the same meeting. Actually, under this board's rules that it adopted, if it's within the same meeting, it has to be the majority. But in a subsequent meeting, anyone can bring up such a motion. Now, your first issue concerning it not being on the agenda, that's a different matter, of course, and typically, you go through a process through your work session, and then through your regular meeting each month to have items or matters put on the agenda. But you always have the ability, by a separate vote, to change your procedure on either a permanent basis or an ad hoc basis for a particular situation. So I would agree with you that I think it would require a motion to suspend your typical rules of procedure and policies to bring up a new matter for this evening. And if that motion were to pass, then I think you could consider a new matter on your agenda. That would be the way I would interpret your procedure, as I understand it. But as to, at a subsequent meeting, being able to vote again on a matter that was previously voted on, that only applies to the meeting in which the original vote occurred.
Madam Chairman, I will withdraw my objection. If somebody wants to second the motion.
Can I get clarification, Rich? Are you saying that there would need to be a motion to amend the agenda first? I mean, he just made a motion. So are we acting on the motion that he made, calling for a second? Or are you saying we need a different motion first to amend the agenda?
That's the way I would see it, simply because your typical procedure is to put matters on your work session agenda for discussion before they come to the regular meeting for consideration. And you can deviate from that procedure, but I think that that has to be something that is approved by the board to do, let's say, either on a permanent basis or on a particular basis such as tonight. So I'm saying that I believe that under your procedure and your policy, you can consider that. But I think first you'd need to ascertain if the board is willing to consider a motion that's made not on the, that wasn't on the regular agenda.
Point of order, Madam Chairman and Mr. Parliamentarian. I make this motion as a remedy to the item that is brought up on our agenda at this time. Granted, it includes other things as well, but my intention is, as a portion of this motion, to remedy the item that appears on our agenda that was pulled from our consent agenda tonight. I understand that. But I still think that if you look at the item that's on the agenda, it's to approve the reallocation of the funds. That's all it is. As I understood your motion, it was to basically amend the budget vote that was taken last month. Those are two separate things, as I see them. And that's why I say if your motion goes beyond just the item that's on the agenda, then I think there needs to be a prior vote as to whether this board wants to consider something that's beyond the agenda item that's listed. Your understanding is correct, and I respect your decision. So in lieu of the motion that I just made, I will withdraw that motion and make a motion that our agenda be amended to add this item of business.
Okay, so you're making a motion to amend the agenda to discuss the budget in general? Is that, I just want to make sure I understand.
That would be appropriate, yes.
This item is already on the agenda.
As Mr. Cook described, Commissioner Morris's motion is far more overbroad than what is on the agenda. And so to address Commissioner Morris's motion, we would have to suspend our rules to allow a more inclusive, a more inclusive motion than what is on the agenda.
Which is what my most recent motion is requesting.
Okay, and I'm going to go back to Rich. So is that a motion that can be considered or not at this time?
Yes. If it gets a second and it's voted affirmatively, then, if that were the case, then there would be an opportunity for Commissioner Morris to make his original motion, which was for something that wasn't on your agenda for this evening.
Okay, so following that train of thought, I want to make sure I do this correctly. We have a motion to amend the agenda to add an item to discuss the overall budget, right? Okay. Is there a second to amend the agenda? I'll second it just so that we can have discussion. That's what we're supposed to do. All those in favor, is there any discussion about amending the agenda, other than what you've already said? Do you want to say anything? Do you want to say anything? Okay. I just want to make sure everybody has a chance.
Well, I would just add that I think that the number and tone of comments that we've heard tonight certainly would support the need for some additional discussion, and I would appreciate that courtesy.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second to amend the agenda. All those in favor of amending the agenda say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, I didn't hear you, I just make sure. Okay, so that motion fails, two to three. Okay. Thank you, Rich, for your help.
We back on to?
Number five, yes, sir.
Can we put five and six together?
I think we need to do them separate, because they were originally separate.
I want to make a motion to table number five until we get some information back from the school board in our next public meeting.
Okay, just to clarify, are you tabling it to the work session, or are you tabling it to the general?
Yeah, let's table the work session and see if we want to put it back on the consent agenda, or if we want to put it back on your business, on the work session.
In August.
In August.
Okay. I just want to make sure I understand. So we have a motion to table the new item, number five, which, to make it easier, is the two points, roughly $2.7 million amount. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Okay, there is a motion, is there a second? Is there any other discussion?
I will vote for that motion, but I do want to make very clear that the reason that we, it amazes me that people continue to say that we voted for budget reductions out of personal animus. Since probably the meeting that I came on this board, I said my number-one goal is to take our cash money that we receive from the taxpayers and use that to fund our priorities so that we do not have to go out and borrow money, folks. Our debt has grown 760% in 20 years, and we get this group of people that comes in here, and all they talk about is, we need more programs. We couldn't possibly do with four less employees at a library system out of 40. We couldn't possibly do without this farm program whereby 10 farmers are learning how to farm at $150,000. Folks, we have got real debt problems in this country. The debt from a country perspective, do you realize? In 2000, our total national debt for over 200 years of history was $5 trillion. Today, it's approaching $18 trillion. In 14 years, it's gone up $13 trillion. Who cares about this stuff? Our debt at the county level is doing the same thing. It's gone up $400 million in the past 20 years. So I will vote to table this, but I'm very clear about the fact that this money is going to our schools. Another funny thing that made me laugh, people got upset at me that we didn't take this money and use it to fund a tax decrease. I mean, we've got $400 million in debt, folks. We've got to be responsible at some point. We've really got to move past these little tiny projects that have very little significance on our community and move into big things like $400 million of debt.
Okay, we do have a motion and a second. Is there any other comments? All those in favor of tabling this item until the August work session say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Now we have item number six, which was the item five in consent that we moved for purposes of understanding it's the $3.9 million amount. Is there any comment or motion on that?
I'd like to make a motion. We table this item until our August work session and decide, well, we're going to leave it on the consent agenda for our regular meeting, and how it will go to the school board, and waiting on some information from the school board, all reason I'm tabling this.
Okay, we have a motion to table this to the August work session. Is there a second for the motion?
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and there's a second. Is there any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion is tabled. Let me get, next we have appointments to boards. If you will, pull this a little bit closer. If you will go to page 229 in your agenda. First up is the Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee. Let's see, we, the term is up from one member, so at this time I need a motion to remove Cynthia Brooks from the Adult Home Community Advisory Committee roster and thank her for her service. And also a motion to appoint Diamond Staten-Williams to the Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee for an initial one-year term ending July 31st, 2015. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Motion passes. Page 234, the Board of Equalization and Review. Let's see, we need a motion to remove Jeff Carpenter from the Board of Equalization and Review roster and thank him for his service. A motion to reappoint Bob Carruth to the Board of Equalization and Review for a three-year term ending June 30th, 2017. Motion to appoint Keith Troutman to the Board of Equalization and Review as a regular member for a three-year term ending June 30th, 2017. A motion to appoint an applicant, I'm sorry, we have a couple people, I think, for, let me do those first. Do I have a motion for those three?
So moved.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we need to fill an alternate member position. And do we have, if you'll look on 237, I think that's right, we have two other applications there, Helen McGinnis and David Nekamp. Is there a motion? Does anybody know either of those? We might like to make a motion for one of them to fill the alternate member position. Okay, I will make a motion to appoint Helen McGinnis.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I don't know Ms. McGinnis. I was just picking on her because she was female. I'd be upfront about that one. Hopefully, she's looking forward to serving. Let's see, page 238, Cabarrus County Senior Senators Advisory Council. We need a motion to remove Rosa Santos and Sharon Hatley from the Cabarrus County Senior Senators Advisory Council. A motion to appoint Alinda Walker for an unexpired term ending December 31st, 2014. And a motion to appoint Martha Keiker for an unexpired term ending December 31st, 2016. Do I have such a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Madam Chairman, I wanted to voice one concern about the Senior Senators Advisory Council, and looking over the list of the members of that council, I had noticed and had asked a question earlier that there is no representation at all from Kannapolis or the northern part of the county on that board. So I think that's something that we should take a look at and try to make that a little bit more inclusive. Hopefully, there'll be some Kannapolis folks watching tonight that will express an interest in serving in that capacity.
Point well made. It is, there is an application on the website, which I would mention in a minute, but I'll go ahead and say, if you are, in this case, as has been asked, someone from Kannapolis or in that part of the county that would be interested in serving, you're welcome to contact the county manager's office or to fill out the application online and submit it for our consideration. On page 243, Commissioners, it's the Transportation Advisory Board. We need a motion to remove Vicki Proctor, the citizen advocate/retired, Daniel Payne, County Schools, and Jody Ramirez, law enforcement, from the Transportation Advisory Board roster and thank them for their service. And a motion to remove Janet Purser, the Head Start representative, from that roster. A motion to reappoint Patricia Baker from Human Services for a three-year term ending June 30th, 2017, including an exception to the length of service provision in the appointment policy. Do I have such a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And now on page 249, the Cabarrus County Youth Council. See, we need a motion to appoint Ashton Brown from JM Robinson High School, Christina Jones from Mount Pleasant High School, and Alvarez Neely II from Concord High School to the Cabarrus County Youth Council for two-year terms ending June 30th, 2016. Chris, would you like to make that motion?
So moved.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that's the end of our appointments. You have a number of reports in your packet. At this time, I would go to item J. I've already mentioned about applications, but I'll say that again. If you're interested in serving on one of our boards, please let us know. Item J, general comments by board members. Are there any comments at this time?
Madam Chairman, you skipped over updates from commission members who serve as liaison, so I will do that and this at the same time. Just wanted to mention a few facts about the library. We had our library trustees meeting this past week. They gave us the end-of-year numbers. I think that their program attendance was up this year to 31,062 people that actually attended programs at the library. The overall circulation numbers were 695,000 items, which is just incredible to me. They have a great deal of other statistics that they keep up with. Their door count was 421,000 people went through the doors of public libraries in Cabarrus County this past year, which I think is tremendous, and it says a lot for that service that we provide to our citizens. Also, they are in the midst of their summer reading program, which is a very exciting time for them, and this summer currently enrolled, there are 3,000 children in those programs, 1,600 adults, and 650 teens that are enrolled in summer reading programs, which I think is a pretty significant number if you've got children on their vacations and their, and adults as well that are benefiting from the programs at the library. Wanted to also mention the, this would involve our library system as well as our Parks and Recreation Branch. I hope that most of you saw an article in the local newspaper recently about the little free libraries that they're beginning at the parks. That is a great program that benefits folks. That is a great program that benefits folks, very little or no expense involved in it. I wish -- I'm drawing a blank at the name of the park employee that kind of headed that up, but wanted to applaud him. I understand that he's been contacted by the national organization that promotes these type of things and indicated that this was one of the only efforts that they had that was supported by a county itself. So I feel very, very proud of that. That's my liaison comments. Moving on into general comments. I did have some comments that I would like to share regarding the motion that I made earlier that was not allowed to be considered. You know, I'm not going to talk about every one of the cuts that were made to our budget, but I want to highlight a few. First one is reducing our non-departmental contingency. At a time when we're involved with ongoing mediation with the Board of Education and potential litigation, as well as an uncertain state budget and how that will affect our local-funded teacher salaries, I think it is very unwise to remove the ability to handle those unexpected expenses. To delete all funding for the county employee health center, in addition to the fact that the operation of the health center has saved significant expense for the county and overall health care expenses, it is my understanding that the lease on that facility runs through November the 1st, and the county will be required to pay rent on it until that time. Also, the staffing agreement for the health center requires a 90-day notice to terminate that agreement, which means that we will be incurring expenses for those personnel through October the 1st. I think it was unwise to terminate services June 30th while we continue to pay those expenses. A recent report, just within the last week or so, from the National Association of County Commissioners reported, "Most counties offer some type of wellness program at a higher rate than 2009. The number of counties offering wellness programs jumped from 59% in 2009 to more than 80% this year. The elimination of our health center and our wellness coordinator will not save taxpayer money, but will increase our expenses. At a time when it is estimated that over 70% of our population is considered obese, it is unwise for the county to not attempt to promote fitness amongst its employees." The Health Alliance cuts. I do not consider it fair to reduce our school nurse program because we do not agree with the architectural style of the Health Alliance building. Removing funding for four positions in the Concord Main Library. As was mentioned by some of our speakers, this is a 24% reduction of employees for that branch. This cut also affects all branches of the library system, as it includes a relief position for any employee absences at any of the branches. The staffing increases that were cited in the motion over the past few years have not yet allowed the library system to return to full operation when 24 part-time positions were cut from the library and operating hours were reduced several years ago. The increase of 11 positions mentioned in the motion were all part-time positions that resulted in 3.4 full-time equivalents. I have already received complaints about long lines at the checkout desk, and I'm sure that other reductions in services and hours will surely follow. Funding for the Midland Library should be available when needed to fulfill our earlier promise. If construction schedules do not require expenditures during the current fiscal year, then those funds will be available to move forward as needed. We weren't going to spend that money unless it was needed anyway. Termination of funding for Wallace Park in Midland will result in the loss of $190,000 of funds that have already been invested by the county, as well as $350,000 in grant money that will have to be refused due to our inability to meet the deadline for improvements to receive the grant. The citizens of Midland deserve this enhancement of their quality of life and the potential economic benefits that may be derived from this project. The cuts to the Arena and Events Center will handicap our efforts to continue to come closer to making this facility self-supporting. The expense figures, much like those quoted for the Lowmax Farm, are not altogether accurate. To justify for totally eliminating funding for our Economic Development Corporation, the actions on a national level of the U.S. Chamber of Commerce is flawed. Much like our relationship with the federal government, the local chamber has very little input on national policy. With job creation being a number-one priority of our citizens, we are shortchanging them by totally ignoring and lacking to support industrial recruitment. I have only highlighted a portion of the amendments, but I think that all of these facts are true and accurate. Thank you.
Okay, I do want to report on two things, which I almost forgot about. I sent you an email. So I don't think that, depending on the situation, that the Department of Transportation for North Carolina gets as many public comments as maybe they would like. I've sent to Caushia so she can post it, so that you can find the link, because it's kind of lengthy. I'm on the -- our representative on the Cabarrus Rowan MPO Board, and we will be meeting Wednesday evening. There's several -- there's a different transportation formula called Strategic Transportation Investment, STI, formula, and it's going through the scoring for projects. There's a 30-day public comment period, which will end on August 15. So the projects that you need to be aware of, of Cabarrus County projects that have scored well up to this point. Exit 49 at I-85, commonly known as where Concord Mills is. There's a project to construct a two-lane grade-separated directional left flyover, which just means, everybody knows, you go out to Concord Mills and you get backed up at the first turn, because everybody thinks they have to turn left at the very first light. And so it backs up, and you can't get off the interstate, and it's a big problem. So the idea is that it will fly over, so you won't stop for a light. You'll come over and you'll actually go into the parking lot, if you get in those lanes. So that's one of the projects. It scored number one out of 61 Division Needs Highway Projects. The city of Concord has a Dorada Road project, which you know Dorada Road is where the airport is. And part of it's already been approved to be widened. This would widen from Aviation Boulevard to Concord Mills Boulevard. It's ranked seven out of 61 in Division Needs Highway Projects. And there's a pedestrian access project for sidewalks on both sides of Bruton Smith Boulevard from 29 to Weddington Road. That ranked second out of 40 in bike and pedestrian projects. It's a lot of information. It's on DOT's website. You do need to include the project ID numbers, which will get posted on our website if anybody's interested in making comments in support of that. I think that people out in that area would appreciate it with all the traffic. And the other thing is that I am your representative, one of your representatives, on the WASAC Board, and I'm not certain how many people know. We are in a unique situation here, that they have an incinerator out there that's been operating for a very long time. And the first time I went out there and they opened the little door things to look in, all the heat hits you, because they're burning sludge. That's the nice word, it's sludge. WASAC has undergone a project to put in a turbine to generate electricity as a result of burning your sludge. So the good news is, at approximately 4:00 today, the project went on the electrical grid, which was the first test for 10 minutes to start where WASAC, which handles all of the sewer in Cabarrus County, to be able to actually generate electricity and sell it back on the grid, which will help in the long run for the cost of sewage, in the disposition of sewage. Maybe that's the right word, whatever the word is. You all know what I mean. But they had a good test run today. And I just got that email while we're sitting here, and I thought that was a really good thing to point out. So they've worked -- that staff has worked really hard for that. Anything that you're on that you want to -- anything that you go to? Okay. Any other general comments? Chris, any general comments at this time? Okay. Good news is, we do not need a closed session tonight. So commissioners, at this time, I would accept a motion to adjourn.
Slow move.
Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? If so, you can stay here yourself. Thank you very much to everybody that stayed here with us and to all the TV audience. Good night.